Excellent, let's go, we're done.
So.
Woo, the weekend's here.
So it's eight thirty and I'm gonna call our meeting to order for Tuesday, June twenty-fourth. There is an agenda that was pre-circulated, are there any additions to the agenda? Counselor Christie.
Quick committee report from Community Futures and Ag Service Board.
Okay, so nine point two, Community Futures. And nine point three, Ag Service Board. Anything else? Counselor Cunningham?
I'm just looking for some clarity on the closed session item and if it would be possible to be placed in open session with the agreement of council.
Okay. Everyone seen the closed session item, is there any objection to moving that from closed session into open? I'm not seeing any, so we can move that to open. Would I put that under maybe six point two, Mr. Hogan, where would you think we'd wanna bring that?
I think, Mr. Chair, I'd suggest seven point three.
Seven point three? Okay. All right, so seven point three will now be Council Remuneration Review. Any other changes, additions to the agenda? Counselor Christie?
Definitely, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you for that, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. The regular council meeting minutes of June tenth were pre-circulated, are there any corrections or changes that need to be made there? Not seeing anyone, someone care to move the minutes as presented? Counselor Fokes?
Still moved.
Okay, thank you for that. So, we have a motion to approve the minutes from the June tenth regular council meeting as presented, all those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously, thank you. The first item of business on our agenda this morning is a delegation. FCSS twenty twenty-four annual report, brought to us by Ms. Jackson Mary, welcome Shelley. We'll let you get organized there, and then anytime you're ready. Shelley has never followed a script yet, right?
For which I do apologize.
I guess it's worthy of note, this is probably the last annual report.
This is my farewell tour.
So once you're organized, anytime you're ready, Shelley.
Thank you, good morning. So yeah, just coming to share with you a few highlights from our year twenty twenty-four, which was our twenty-sixth year of operation. We did not see an increase from the provincial government during this time, but the municipalities did give a cost of living increase yet again, which we sincerely appreciate, all the support of our six municipalities. In the trending section, you will see, thank you very much, my lovely assistant, the volunteer engagement, so just with the volunteerism, it is specifically to programs that are impacted by Neheal Regional FCSS, this isn't volunteerism across the entire region, but in our area, we've seen a small increase in the numbers, but a massive increase in the amount of time that they're contributing. So I think that's probably common, a common theme through the area is people are really, when they are committed to a project, they are giving copious amount of time to helping increase the well-being of our communities with their contributions. Parent education, one of the gaps we were seeing is, we've been kinda waiting to see what was happening with the family resource networks that the province funds, and one of the gaps we were seeing is parent education and support, so we did, the board did increase some funds into parent education last year, so we had a number of guest speakers come in, so again, really trying to support caregivers and just increasing the tools and knowledge and just the overall support, because we know that that will impact the well-being of families. Referrals, so a huge part of our job is information and referral, we have access to a lot of services and supports in the Neheal area, but you sometimes have to look really hard to find them, so because a lot of times they're based in other areas. So we do a lot of information and referral, and last year, as you'll see, the most common place we referred to was Alberta Supports and the local food banks, so I think just really, again, emphasizing what we know across the country, the province, and our area is, economically, people are struggling more than they were in previous years, so that has really had an impact. And that leads us probably next to the next trend, which was our Tools for School program that we have ran for many, many years, and twenty twenty-four was by far the highest amount of requests that we had, it was actually up seventy-four percent just from the previous year, so probably coming back into that, and I think certainly the fire up at Toshu-Santero maybe had a small impact on that as well, because we really did reach out to them to make sure that they had the supports that they needed at those times, so. So those were kind of the trends that we've seen, if we move on to individuals, so as you know, our categories are supporting individuals, families, and communities, so, you know, you know our rules, we do a lot of outcome evaluation, not just outputs, and so outcomes really is looking at, so what if we offered this program, is it making a difference for people? So our passing grade is eighty percent, and so I think in twenty twenty-four, the staff did a really good job of enhancing resilience with the programs and services that were evaluated. And this is the one where we probably connect with the most amount of people, because we do a lot of stuff in the individual support. Our Family Wellness Worker Program, for those of you who remember, we've, yeah, in the last few years, their numbers have really, were skyrocketed, and so last year, they were at a hundred and four ongoing clients for two full-time staff, which is still a fairly heavy load, but nothing compared to where we were, so that does feel better, and the single sessions were down a little bit as well. Majority of cases are coming to them through self-referral, and we just know that when people self-refer, it really increases the chances that they engage in the process, and are much more likely to try to utilize the tools and skills that the family wellness workers are working on. The Neheal Community Support Coach, I probably don't need to tell you too much, because Michaela was just here and gave you an update from twenty twenty-four, but certainly really is connecting with our children and youth in our area, and has been very good at delivering programs in all of the municipalities, and at least offering, if for some reason it's not taken up, she's very good at doing a quick switch and filling in in another community so that her time is always, when she's delivering programs, that time is being utilized just for that, so. Our Volunteer Income Tax Program, every time I come here, I say, yeah, this is the most we've ever done, and guess what, I'm gonna say it yet again, so our stellar volunteers, only eleven of those wonderful souls, assisted three hundred and seventy-six people last year, and we just know, that really makes an impact on income, because you need to do your taxes to be able to access all the benefits to access Neheal housing, like any of those things, they need to see that are income-based, they need to see your income tax return or notice of assessment, so, and really trying to break down that barrier that, well, I didn't pay anything, I'm not gonna get anything back, so why do I do my taxes? So anyways, I would say that we're starting to break that down a bit, so the one thing we do is we keep track of what benefits that they get because they did their taxes that year, and so last year, it was over two million eight hundred thousand dollars, so again, that would be making sure that they're accessing their guaranteed income supplement and their child tax benefit, all of those sorts of things, without your taxes, you don't have access to those. So it does have an impact for our area residents, and again, I can't speak highly enough for the amazing volunteers who helped to make that happen. Our Family Support, so again, our outcomes, ninety-two percent report that they've improved communication or parenting skills, so we do put our family marriage counselor in this program, so that's another program that we fund, and it's a free service for all residents in the Neheal area, and that one's been going since two thousand and two, I think, it's been around a long time, so it is one that we always wanna make sure people know about, because you don't, if you don't need to know about it, you don't remember that it's there, so. Anyway, so it's been working well, and then this would be a number of our parent ed programs and things like that that fit under here as well. The Community Support, as I mentioned already, information and referral is one of the largest parts that we do there, the Neheal Community Services Directory, inter-agency meetings, and everything that we do to try and support not-for-profit organizations around volunteerism, engaging volunteers, supporting them, all those sorts of things is what fits into this one, and then any of the Community Discovery Nights, because the most important thing is people knowing what's available to them, so trying to make sure that we keep them aware of that happening. So of course, we do always do appreciate being involved in the county ratepayer events, it's just another avenue that we can reach people that we don't normally reach, so that's a huge plus for us, and we sincerely appreciate it. A look to the future, housing is a challenge, and I think I just recently got an email from Economic Development Officer, so maybe there's something in the works there, but that's probably another common issue that we receive, is people needing housing. We do, there are a number of grants and subsidies available for people, the Rent Benefit Program, and they just recently, the Alberta Government just recently switched us from being administered out of Drumheller Housing to being administered out of Mountain View Housing for the Rent Benefit Assistance Program, and they keep saying, well, why is no one in the Neheal area applying? Well, if they're already on the program, they're being administered out of Drumheller, and there's just no ability to shift or move. I was at Toshu Council last night, and they mentioned that something came up for rent, and in no time, they had thirty-five people applying, so it's just really tough to find housing, so we certainly do have individuals and families who are staying with other people to accommodate that, so that is a bit of a struggle. Twenty twenty-six, we'll see us move to the Provincial Accountability Framework, so it was written into our last grant that CIO Hogan signed three years ago, so, which was a bit of an issue for a lot of FCSS programs across the province, because they wrote it in, but then they didn't really give us a way to be accountable back to them, so anyways, they have worked on that in the last three years, so that is underway for twenty twenty-six, and so all of the programs and services and supports we deliver now need to be connected back to the province prevention priorities, which are homelessness and housing insecurity, mental health and addictions, employment, family and sexual violence, or aging well in community. So we need to connect those back, where in the past, FCSSs had, didn't had complete autonomy within the box, so it's not that I don't believe the work that we do, we can't connect it back, right? If we're doing life skills for youth, it's coming back to employment, or we're doing stuff for parents, and even though it's extreme words for it, by increasing family communication, we are reducing family violence, so we can connect lots of that back, but it's just another layer of accountability that has been put in there, and training is underway, and our new three-year agreement hopefully will show up in November, December, so that we're set for another three years. So that's kind of that, because this is my farewell tour, I guess I just need to say, it has been an absolute pleasure, I think, as the board has heard me harp many times, this has been my silly dream job, silly, no, I've known I wanted to do this since I was eighteen years of age, and since I was, I don't know, maybe nineteen or twenty, I've worked at FCSSs in Stettler Drum, and then here, so, yeah, so, and small-town Alberta is my jam, so, and standing up and making sure rural voices are heard is important, which I have been fairly vocal recently about my struggles with the Alberta Support System being all online, that for people who have no money, and then to expect to make their life easier by having to apply online and download and print documents which you have to sign, then you have to scan them and upload them, I just don't think that's in the best interest, and so I do tend to be fairly vocal about a few things like that, and I think once I hang up my FCSS Director's Hat, I will probably even be a little more. And I think once I hang up my FCSS director's hat, I will probably even be a little more vocal about. But occasionally, I hear from communities that regional programs can be difficult, because people have different ideas of what, you know, preventive social programming in their area looks like. But since the day I started here twenty-seven years ago, I can't speak highly enough to the elected officials who have always sat on my board, who truly have the best interest of all people in the Nehe Hill area and all of their ratepayers. So, whatever is best for one, they make it work. So it has been a real pleasure to have that support, and I think that that's what's really helped grow this program. And again, the amount of support I've felt from every municipality has been incredible for the work that the amazing staff do here. So anyways, it has been a pleasure, as I say farewell.
All right. Thank you, Shelley. Are there questions or comments for Shelley? I did some quick math, if your dream is at eighteen and you've worked for twenty-six or twenty-seven years, that only makes you forty-five. Why are you retiring? Counselor Christie.
I appreciate very, very, very much what you've done for our community. And there's a group called FCSS that's always looking for volunteers for seniors that have nothing to do.
Well done.
Ooh, ouchie.
I couldn't resist.
Counselor Penner.
Shelley, I don't think we can say thank you enough. You've been so committed to this, and as you just mentioned there, you know, you're stuck with it for all those years. And, yeah, I can't say thank you loud enough for everything you've done. And I'm sure that you will volunteer, because you're very passionate about this, but I hope you're able to relax a little bit more, and then come back and really, I know you've enjoyed it, but I mean, you'll enjoy it even more, I think, when you're just volunteering. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Any other, oh, Counselor Cunningham.
So, what I'm hearing throughout that is what we hear all the time, is you're doing more with less, or maybe just the same amount. So, I know yesterday, there was a newly-elected MLA in the area, so I would encourage my fellow elected officials and all ratepayers to advocate to that new MLA for perhaps increased funding, which I know people around this table have been very much advocating for at RMA and other avenues. I appreciate your comments about the online applications. Between someone that's maybe in a bad situation, lacking money, or seniors that aren't able to do that, that's very frustrating. I know I'm an old dinosaur, but back in the day when I worked for the province, we actually did home visits, and we helped people with those applications. I know things have changed, and I'm not sure if that's the safest way, but there has to be a better way than having people try to go online. So anyways, and yes, all the best in your retirement, and being an advocate for the area and what you believe in is so important. So, thank you for that, and like they said, take time to relax as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Deputy Reeve McGee.
You know me, I have to talk, it's just, I serve on the Regional Economic Development Group, and I just need to voice my passion about people-first is how economy goes well in this province, and for them having such a robust economy-driven mandates, the fact that FCSS is not getting the support, and the people that you serve are not getting the support they need to be part of the economy doing well in Alberta is shameful. And I think that's a really key point, that we need to wrap this argument around how this affects economy. We're not going to get people into the workforce if we're not connecting with them, and being online-only names, there's not connection, for example. And so, the work you've done here has shown what great success personal interaction has. To have your increased numbers year over year over year is because of your great history of people knowing you here in this community, and knowing that this program is what they need, and will be backed up by real action. And so, I just, I can't say enough about it, but I'm also gonna challenge you with a question. I have always thought the need is always greater than the people who access your programs. So, my thought is, because you've had all your success, you have had your numbers increase all the time, would you see any other credit for that high self-referral that you've happened, that has happened, or what else could happen to increase that even yet?
So the self-referral is our family wellness workers, and we have a very strong partnership with the school division, and we are very fortunate to have that. But I think the support from the administrators, that sort of thing, helps make that happen. One of our family wellness workers has been here a very, very long time, and that makes a difference as well, I think, because they really get no one. But they have built a strong reputation, and they always make a point, right? So maybe in September, their caseload isn't quite as heavy, but they're not sitting in an office behind a closed door, they are out engaging and introducing themselves and all those sorts of things, which makes a difference. And that's probably one of the things that might annoy the staff a bit, but I really push for that, is how can we just make sure our faces are out there, so that it becomes known that, I don't really, because the amount of people who phone our office and say, I really don't have a clue, or they just phone and say, what do you do? And we're always like, do you have an area that you might wanna narrow it down? But a lot of times, people don't know exactly what we're about, and so taking that time to share the sorts of things we do, we often usually get to where they need to go. So I think, just making sure, so any of that community development stuff, where we're really trying to engage with people, and not getting frustrated that we may have met with this person five times in other places, but then they didn't know, that then they, oh, well, Suzie said I should call you. And we're like, well, in our heads, well, we talked to you five times already, but right now, this is what they need, and they feel very comfortable. So it's really just making sure universally, the more people who know that we're out there, even if they don't know the exact, that I would go to this office for this. And then, I E., when they come in for the Community Volunteer Income Tax Program, I mean, we really make a point to have all of our programs listed, all the other sorts of things, making sure that they take a directory, like whatever that is. And that's one of the reasons we hired the, an actual part-time staff person to run that program, because you don't have to run them through. You actually can have conversations and connect to them, as Counselor Cunningham was just speaking about, you actually can give them a bit of time if they have a few other things. And you can often hear about a struggle they're having with a grandchild, or something like that. So you have that ability to connect. So I think all of that stuff, Counselor McGee, comes into play to just trying to create that awareness. I don't know if that answers your question.
It really does, thank you. I appreciate the information, so we can continue to advocate well for it. And then, besides the question, of course, I have to thank my hero, you are a rural hero for rural communities and for people just in general. And so, thank you so much for your dedication and all that many of us have learned from you.
All right, thank you. Deputy Reeve, anybody else have any comment or, Counselor Whitstone, please.
Good morning, Shelley. We've known each other for quite a while. You've made a few presentations in that chair, and some other chairs prior to that. Anyway, I just wanted to say thank you ever so much for everything that you've done for the community, for us as council, and for the municipality. I don't know how we're gonna replace your enthusiasm and your bubbly personality, but I don't know, it's gonna be tough, but it'll probably happen, so any, all the best, and thank you ever so much for what you've done over the years, not to age you by any means.
Okay, well, Shelley, you know how I feel about this program, and certainly, I'm very grateful for the leadership you've provided. I was just thinking about visibility, and one of the things that's potentially gonna really help is now having the grant writer in the office here in three hills of the FCSS building, and that will bring people in who otherwise normally wouldn't necessarily come in that door. And so, certainly, that's gonna help a little bit with the visibility. And my question is, how's that going?
Thank you. I, yeah, I forgot to mention that in my presentation. I was staring at the clock at the bottom of the screen ahead of me and started to panic a bit. Yeah, so we've hired Chrissy Ferguson, and she's just started, and yeah, so we're just really trying to get her name out there. I feel it's a great fit, just as you said, Reeve King, just to connect, because we do our best to support those not-for-profits. And so, how can we really try and connect with them to let them know that this opportunity is there? So she's just kind of getting her feet under her, I know she has a meeting tomorrow with one of the not-for-profits in the area who has a grant application that they're interested in having her some, having some support to make that happen. So, yeah. So anyways, we will accept any and all help from all of our municipalities to make sure that that awareness is out there in any way we can. So we'll try and get it out through all the municipal newsletters and all that kind of thing, but we will accept any help at all, just because, I mean, it's an amazing program, and that's, part of the reason it ended up on our door, is I was very concerned when the president grant writer took on a new position, and she has done an amazing job, but doesn't have to do a lot of PR, because everyone just knows you call her. So anyways, so we're working on that PR thing, and I think you're right, that's another great way to connect with people. And they tend to be the movers and shakers in the community, right? Because they tend to be connected volunteering for those not-for-profit organizations, and so, yeah, having them come in our door will be fabulous. Thank you.
All right, and I'll add my thanks. I'm sure, I'm gonna see you a number of times before you're done, and, but certainly appreciate the leadership that you've given to that program over the years, and your enthusiasm rubs off on the people that are working for you. Either that, or they come enthusiastic, because that's who you're looking for. So, just thank you. On behalf of the Nehe Hill community, certainly appreciate your contributions to that program over the years, and wish you all the best in whatever that retirement you're taking looks like.
Having that been on my identity, Christ.
So anyway, on behalf of Nehe Hill County and our residents, thank you for your many years of dedicated services, much appreciated. And thank you for being here today.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, it is, we are at the point where we are moving on in our agenda to five-point-one-point-one, which is bylaw nineteen twenty-two, re-designation from Hamlet Residential to Hamlet Commercial. And welcome, Ms. Hay Morgan.
Good morning. Okay, I bring before you today, the Torrington Tourism Action Society, which is also known as the Torrington Gopher Hole Museum, is the current landowner of the northeast thirty-four, thirty-two, twenty-six, west of the fourth, plan six-eight-two-zero-GY, block eight, lot eight, lot eight, and is applying to redesignate the entire parcel, which is three-hundred-and-ninety-two-point-forty-eight square meters that the museum sits on. The property is currently zoned Hamlet Residential. To facilitate a new building, the parcel needs to be re-designated to Hamlet Commercial to allow for a museum, which is section ninety-five, letter U. The proposed site is at two-oh-two First Street South in the Hamlet of Torrington, which can be accessed via First Street South. The applicants are working towards securing a new building for the world-famous Gopher Hole Museum, but due to the parcel's current zoning, a new building cannot be permitted for this use. The planning and development department intends to complete a blanket rezoning of the properties in our Hamlets to ensure zoning aligns with the current land use bylaw eighteen-oh-eight when it is reviewed. However, due to the applicant's timeline, the redesignation must be addressed before our land use bylaw review begins. Notices are requirements of section six-oh-six of the Municipal Government Act. They must be done by an advertised method in accordance with Nehe Hill County Bylaw seventeen-seventy-two, which notes that the three hills capital and the Nehe Hill County website as our official means for notification. As part of our process, we continue to mail notices to adjacent landowners and referral agencies within one mile of the site, who can be considered potential affected parties. The internal Nehe Hill County departments are also referred to and agencies. Residents and landowners within a mile radius will receive the referral notice. A person who claims to be deemed affected must be allowed to be heard by council. First reading is also the mechanism for moving the application into the process. The uses can be introduced for the, on the lands for the Hamlet Commercial District have been attached for your review.
Okay, thank you. So are there any questions for Ms. Hay Morgan with regard to this request? Made it so simple, there are no questions. It's a win, right? All right, if there are no questions, are we prepared to move first reading and move on in the process? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd like to move. We have first reading of proposed bylaw nineteen twenty-two for the purpose of amending land use bylaw eighteen-oh-eight by re-designating a portion of the northeast thirty-four, thirty-two, twenty-six, west of four, plan six-eight-two-zero, block eight, lot eight, from Hamilton Residential District to Hamlet, excuse me, from Hamlet Residential District to Hamlet Commercial District. I think I have a bug on my glasses, added stuff.
It's the cursor on the screen.
Okay.
All right, thank you for that, Deputy Reeve McGee. So, we now have a motion. Is there any discussion to the motion? Not seeing any. So, the motion is that council move first reading of proposed bylaw nineteen twenty-two for the purpose of amending land use bylaw eighteen-oh-eight by re-designating a portion of the northeast thirty-four, thirty-two, twenty-six, west of four, plan six-eight-two-zero-GY, block eight, lot eight, from Hamlet Residential District to Hamlet Commercial District. I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously, thank you. The next step would be public hearing, setting a date. Counselor Phobes.
I'd make the motion that council move to schedule a public hearing as per section two-one-six dot, or dot four, and two-six-ninety-two. I also have that same bug. Of the Municipal Government Act to be held on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five at ten AM.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Phobes. So, we now have a motion to schedule a public hearing as per section two-one-six-point-four and six-nine-two of the Municipal Government Act to be held on July twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five at ten AM. Any discussion to that motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously as well. So thank you, Ms. Hay Morgan. But I don't think we're letting you go just yet, are we? The next item in our agenda is five-point-one-point-two, request to waive fees, the Torrington Tourism Action Society. And again, anytime you're ready, please.
Hello again. As per the subdivision and development fees refund policy, section five, fees will be charged as per the master rates bylaw. Any request to waive development subdivision and/or endorsement fees shall be dealt with through an application to council. The Torrington Tourism Action Society, also referred to as the Torrington Gopher Hole Museum, is a nonprofit organization that needs to replace its current building to continue operating. As part of the review of the land use bylaw, the zoning and Hamlets is being assessed to ensure that it aligns with the actual use of the land. Any parcels that need to be revised would have been changed during this process at no cost to the landowner. The parcel is zoned Hamlet Residential District and has been flagged to be rezoned to the Hamlet Commercial District to accommodate, sorry, Hamlet Residential District and has been flagged to rezone to the Hamlet Commercial District to accommodate the museum use. Unfortunately, the Gopher Hole Museum cannot wait until the land use bylaw review is completed, so they've submitted their application to rezone the property outside of the process. They've already lost out on an opportunity- They've already lost out on an opportunity to bring in a building that was gifted to them. Mrs. Curda, Director of the Gopher Hole Museum, requests a fund of $900 redesignation fee and the 650 subdivision application fee, which were submitted with their applications. This would, they would also like to waive the $300 endorsement fee required at the end of the subdivision process. In their community grant application from October 2023, the organization identified their primary role as the operating the museum. However, they are currently late in submitting their community grant accountability statement. The required documentation remains outstanding, which would render the, render them ineligible for some forms of county funding. And that is it for my report.
Okay, so they're basically, they paid their fees to apply at this point and they're asking us to waive them and refund them?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Are there any questions with regard to the request from the Torrington Tourism Action Society? Okay, I'm not seeing any. That's twice today you've satisfied all our need for information, so thank you. What is the wish of council? We have the request.
Sorry, no, I just, you have a question or?
It's a comment, more than anything. So when I look at the, because I live in this town, as I look at the Gopher Hole Museum, that museum, believe it or not, gets a ton of people that roll through there. But the great thing about the museum is, is the people don't just keep it for in Torrington. If someone asks a question on, hey, where should I go for this? They're very great at getting them to go throughout our county, to support the local businesses that we have here. So this is an asset, in my opinion, to be able to help them still move us forward, so.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Phobes. Counselor Penner?
Did they mention why they have not submitted their community grants? Or maybe it's back to administration here? It's very important that some of that is finalized before we move on to another area.
We've sent four letters and one phone call. And she said she's going to get promises, she's gonna have the paperwork in, and then it never shows up. So I don't know what, why she hasn't.
So, sorry, I just made a quick phone call to the applicant this morning before I came in here. She's collected a few of the copies from the receipts. She had a basement flooding. And it had sewage in it, so some of the boxes had to be thrown out. And she's not sure where the paperwork is. So she's concerned that some of the receipts were in those boxes when they packaged up their basement and then they were, have been thrown away. So she has reached out to some of the vendors to have them replaced, but she's still missing a few of the receipts. So that's all I can offer on that.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Penner.
So it's unfortunate of the event that's happened to her. I would like to see her or the organization come forward with as much as they have and the explanation of the ones that are missing. And in saying that, I would like to make the motion that council move forward to refund the redesignation and subdivision fees and waive the endorsement fee for the Gopher Hole Museum once they have met their community grant accountability statement.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Penner. Are there any questions or comments related to the motion? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Penner.
Like I do 100%, I understand what you are saying, it's a very valuable organization and that, but there just has to be some kind of accountability of just of some kind. Even if it's a discussion to come in with as much as you have and, and explains where, where some of the other money was spent with those invoices or receipts that are missing.
So Ms. Vander Cool, if you could please, you have this, basically the same statement twice in that motion. So once it hits the end of community grant accountability requirements have been completed, I think you could put a period there and we're good. So Counselor Penner, if the motion reads that council move to refund the redesignation and subdivision fees and waive the endorsement fee for the Gopher Hole Museum once their community grant accountability requirements have been completed. Is that sufficient for your?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So a motion by Counselor Penner, is there any further discussion or question to the motion? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So the motion is that council moves to refund the redesignation and subdivision fees and waive the endorsement fee for the Gopher Hole Museum once their community grant accountability requirements have been completed. Since there's no questions, I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And again, thank you, Ms. Morgan, and appreciate you being here this morning. All right, the next item on our agenda would be 5.4.1, which is Housing and Service Needs Estimation. And welcome, Ms. Gabrant. And anytime that you're ready.
All right, good morning, council.
Good morning.
Right, so Economic Development received some information from the RDN Rural Development Network on May 26th for an upcoming call for applications to participate in the Alberta Provincial Housing and Service Needs Estimation Project. This report utilizes a term housing insecurity, which refers to various challenges that people face in accessing and maintaining safe, stable, and affordable housing. It may include, but it's not limited to, high housing costs relative to income, frequent moves or risk of eviction, living in overcrowded or substandard housing, lack of access to long-term secure housing, or experiencing homelessness or being on the brink of homelessness. The Housing and Service Needs Assessment provides a comprehensive picture of housing insecurity in your community, which can help the municipality or the community to understand who is experiencing the housing insecurity and why, identify which services are being accessed and which services are missing. So those would be those essential services that FCSS, for example, provides. It supports future policy development, community planning, and collaboration. It also helps develop recommendations for service providers at various levels of government. It will enhance that collaboration among service agencies and all levels of government. And it will also influence the funding and resource allocation decisions. I reached out to the FCSS and the Nehe Hill Adult Learning Center, and it was recognized that the initiative offers a strong opportunity for the Nehe Hill region to engage and benefit through regional collaboration. A regional assessment has not been previously conducted and would assist in that future policy fund development and collaboration. The study would further inform the current situation and needs within the Nehe Hill region. TROSHU, in partnership with the RDN, had conducted a housing needs assessment, but does not address the services provided by, provided by providers within the community to address the housing security. It was further determined through discussion and review of prior community reports that the estimation would be more impactful if done regionally to gather that holistic perspective of the housing situation and needs within the Nehe Hill Regional Partnership, so that KRP. The application for the program was due May 31st. Economic Development submitted the application with an understanding that there is the ability to withdraw from the initiative, as there is no certainty it would be accepted by the RDN. Just to give you a bit of an update on that, just last week, we received confirmation that our application was accepted. Administration is seeking council's endorsement to participate in the Alberta Provincial Housing and Service Needs Estimation Project in partnership and collaboration with the KRP. The Economic Development Department is prepared to take on a significant support role through coordinating survey administration, developing marketing and promotion materials with the assistance of CALS and FCSS. This approach would minimize the time commitment required from member municipalities, focusing their involvement on report input, promotion of the questionnaire, and fulfilling other obligations outlined by the RDN. Administration has forwarded an email, and actually, Mike, I should maybe just, sorry, follow up with that. We will send an email to the KRP indicating the success of this application and determine if there is future interest. So the county has also requested feedback and expressions of interest from other member communities regarding that potential participation. Currently, as of right now, no responses have been received, but we will continue. We will follow up with them after this conversation. Should the KRP not wish to participate, Nehe Hill would like to continue to pursue the opportunity and partner with CALS and FCSS to undergo the Housing and Service Estimation Project. The project is in alignment with the Economic Development Plan priority to strengthen business in addressing housing needs that affects business retention and attraction. The staffing time to commit to the project is approximately four weeks from October 2025 to April 2026. There is no financial commitment to acquire the study. Marketing and promotion costs of the survey, if required, could be executed through Nehe Hill's existing channels, such as the newspaper, social media, website, et cetera, that we already currently do. And any additional costs would be administered through the Nehe Hill Regional Partnership budget should that partnership proceed. So I included a copy of the RDN estimates, estimations info package in there as well. Just shows the outline of how the initiative will execute. And we're asking that council may approve administration to proceed with the Housing and Service Needs Assessment Project alongside the KRP. In the event that the KRP opts out, administration is approved to proceed with the support from FCSS, CALS, and RDN. Alternatively, council may make a motion to accept the Housing and Service Needs Estimation for information, or that council may accept a motion to withdraw the application to the Housing and Serv, Service Needs Estimation.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Gabrant. Questions, discussion? Deputy Reeve McGee.
Initially, upon reading this, I think this is a great idea. I do have a question just for information purposes of, of understanding the full picture. Do we know if any of the municipalities within our borders or attached to our borders are going to be part of this process on their own, by their own capacities?
By their own, so through the chair, Deputy Reeve McGee. I had talked to a few, just casually, because I needed to know who participated in along with the TROSHU one. And ACME did say they would be interested because of some of the developments going on there. This is something that they need to do. And when I was meeting with TROSHU on their economic development plan, we did just briefly speak about it. And they had mentioned they likely, possibly wouldn't, but she would still bring it forward for a discussion, just because they just did their housing needs assessment. But again, it doesn't address the service side. So when I spoke with RDN, I asked, well, what happens if we need it as a region? Just because that's what better encapsulates the information. And she said, if we have FCSS and CALS to the table, we don't necessarily need to have all the municipalities on board. So I did get that.
So one of the things that we've heard over and over is this housing and the need for housing. And certainly, to me, this makes sense to do investigation, to see what's actually out there and what's actually needed. One of the things that I came home from FCM with, and I think Deputy Reeve McGee would agree with me, we had a conversation about this at that point, is the inability of small communities to access funding for housing. And to me, to leverage the power of a regional approach, possibly open some doors for us to access funding that we might not otherwise have. And so I'm hopeful that our partner communities would join us in this initiative. But regardless of that, I think we need to do a regional study. And so whether they join or not, I, I'm quite supportive of us moving forward. I think we need to take action. Like, we can talk about housing forever, but if housing's gonna happen, we need to know what the need is. We need to be able to go forward and say, we've done this. It's like a demand study almost, to say, we now understand what the gaps are and where the holes are and what the absolute need is. We need funding. You have to have data to get that. So I'm 100% on board with this.
Thank you.
Counselor Phobes.
I guess I have a question around what type of federal funding we're gonna get as well. Because when the government of Canada lets in 2.5 million people with only 260,000 jobs roughly available in this country, it makes it awfully difficult for us to be able to even afford any immigrants that come into this country to afford housing. So is there any federal funding that is coming to offset this as well?
So through the chair to Counselor Phobes, are you saying funding for this project or funding for whatever the outcomes that come out?
Both income, like the outcomes as well on the other end of it as well, once we figure out where we're at. Would there be some type of availability for funding from the federal government who ultimately put us in this place?
So we would have to look through that based on what those needs show. Then you'd have to find programming that would align with those needs. So that's too early to tell at this stage? Yeah.
Counselor Cunningham, please.
Thank you. So I think Counselor Phobes kind of touched on what I was looking for. So this is not, the province or the federal government hasn't come out and said they want this study done. This is initiative, the Rural Development Network, right? Okay, so that would be my question too. Like, I'm always interested in finding out the information, but what, what's gonna happen when the results come in? And so if I'm understanding correctly, when the results come in, which looks like, what did it say, April of 2026, I think they're hoping, then the Rural Development Network will then advocate to the province and the federal government for funding initiatives? Is that kind of what I'm hearing?
So through the chair to Counselor Cunningham, that, that would be exactly it. We have to know what the, the need is right now, like how bad of a state or great of a state are we in? And then we make that plan from there to advocate for whatever change needs to come from that data.
So just to follow up on that, I mean, the federal government has made numerous announcements in terms of the Canadian Housing Infrastructure Fund, the Housing Accelerator Fund, the National Housing Strategy. There's, I mean, Rapid Housing Initiative, there's the Canadian Rental Protection Fund. There's all sorts of numerous programs that they've announced. But the constant, ongoing thing that I hear from municipalities and communities across Alberta and across Canada is accessing money through those programs. So in my mind, announcements of programs are one thing. However, regardless of whether there's funding there or not, we need to understand what the housing needs are in our area. For us to go out and promote economic development and not be addressing the other sides of the equation, the social housing and all those things, we're missing a piece of that equation. And so I'm very supportive of us finding out at least what the need is and having some basic understanding of what we might have to do to move that forward.
Absolutely.
But like I say, there's all sorts of money theoretically. But constantly afraid is access, access, access. We're not a community of 2 million people. We're a community of 10,000 people. But is there an opportunity for us to work together and then perhaps access funding? Somehow we have to, we have to drive this forward to get housing built in some shape or form.
That's right, yeah. And through the, through the chair, one of the things that came out of the Brood project as well that we're still building those reports on, but we are seeing that as a high need as well, not just here, but in that greater region, right? Is that housing has to be addressed. It's one of the major constraints of acquiring workforce. There's just no housing. And, and Ms. Jackson even at FCSS just alluded a little bit to that housing insecurity as well in the area. So, so we know it's here, it's just we can't quantify it, and this will help do that.
Counselor Cunningham, please.
So just when you mentioned the Brood results, so is there information from that Brood survey that came out that maybe you guys could utilize with this information as well?
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Cunningham, yeah, absolutely. It will all be able to align within there, as well as the previous Community Futures Workforce Development Study. That was also showing a need in there or a barrier to getting workforce, right? So all of this helps build that business case for it. So all of this helps build that business case for it.
Any other que- Counselor Cunningham, or Phobes, sorry. Please, Counselor Phobes.
I guess I have a question. I mean, if we're going to address housing needs, do we have land in our, as an asset to, for the county to even build on, to start housing?
Can I defer that?
Okay, yeah, you can. Yeah, you can.
Mr. Gannon, do you want to address that?
Uh, thank you through the chair. Through the Economic Development Department, we are looking at our available land portfolio with other projects. This is basically a data set to really talk about the need, different initiatives of trying to find land, or how to endorse the land that we potentially have would be future projects. So the question that you're asking is, we're uncertain. Okay? There's more information to come as economic development runs through their data sets, trying to get real on-ground data. That will provide the opportunity to make some of the decisions in front of council, should it be to look at re-designating land for those purposes, or looking at partners in order, in order to move to these housing strategies or the need within the community. So right now, unfortunately, the answer is, we're uncertain.
One of the other comments I think I want to make is that sometimes when we look at these things, they seem insurmountable and very daunting. And you go, how does a little place like Neehill County or this region do anything? And all I can do is point to the example of the Troschu Senior Housing Facility, and there's a little engine that wouldn't stop and kept pushing, 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 pushing. And after many, many years, we're seeing the results of those efforts. And I think we recognize in our area that there's a need. I think we need to define what that is, and then we need to start pushing, 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 or nothing ever's going to happen. Somebody has to take the lead sooner or later to make this go forward. If we want economic development, they want to come in and build business. They don't necessarily want to have to build housing for their workers. They'd want that in place. And so there is an onus on us to, I think personally, to move this forward, so. Any other comments or questions? Deputy Reeve McGee.
Uh, I think this is, like you said, a very large item, and housing in general's a very large item, and we need all the data we can to give us direction and strategy. And I think this is the best first step for us to find that strategy of what we can do. So I'd like to make the motion that council proceed with the Housing and Service Needs Estimation Project.
Okay, thank you for that, Deputy Reeve McGee. Any further discussion, question, or comment related to this item that's in front of us or the motion that council asks administration to proceed with the Housing and Service Needs Estimation Project? Counselor Christie, please.
Just a comment. I see this as the foundation to attract a developer that may develop housing, to get it started. Well, I'm watching a development beside a condo that I have in Oath, it just keeps growing and growing. There's like 30 units in the last three years. They're building, as they build them, they sell them. They're, they're moving faster than they can get the roofs on, literally. So I think it's, it's the step, the first step to get there, for me.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
I also have the comment that I think, though I didn't put it in my motion, and I'm not, I guess I'm also asking if this needs to be a motion to council, I do think we still need to take this to the Neehill Regional Partnership. There has to be a role there that I, all our partners in this region have to at least be aware of this, but I also would like to see some attempt by us to move some engagement by our regional partners. So I guess I'm asking administration, do we need a second motion when it comes to that point, to address that, or should I just say we're going to do it?
Well, you've already said we're going to do it if we vote on it. Mr. Hogan or Mr. Gannon?
Through, through the chair, we, we are recommending two motions, one that we proceed with this, and the second that we forward it to the Neehill Regional Partnership.
Great.
Counselor Cunningham.
I appreciate that clarification, because in the financial implications, it talks that any additional costs would be administered through the KRP. So are we, do we need clarity that they are on board with that?
So just to help get clarification, my understanding would be is, if the KRP joins then, we would administer extra costs to them. If they don't join, does that mean we're carrying the ball?
Through the chair, that would be the, that would be how this, how this plays out, yes. If the, if the KRP or other members don't join, then some of the, the items outlined in the RFDs, such as the advertising, survey preparation, marketing, et cetera, would be borne through our Economic Development Department. If other partners in the KRP took part, then there would be shared funding through the KRP, would be the intent.
All right. So the motion on the floor currently is that council direct administration to proceed with the Housing and Service Needs Estimation Project, moved by Deputy Reeve McGee. Any further discussion to that motion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that looks like it's carried unanimously. Thank you. And then we wanted to potentially increase our partners' participation, and so we would need a second motion to direct that. Counselor Penningham.
I'd make that motion, that council recommend the Housing and Service Needs Estimation Project be presented to the KRP for consideration.
Okay, thank you for that. So the motion is that council recommend the Housing and Needs Estimation Project be presented to the Neehill Regional Partnership for their consideration. Any conversation, discussion related to that motion? Counselor Cunningham.
Do we need to add that if there's additional costs, that we're requesting that the KRP take care of that, or does that not need to be included here?
Um, if KRP decided, now again, I'm going to ask Mr. Hogan to help me out here, if KRP decided to participate, and it's a partnership decision, then usually costs are shared. Am I correct in that?
Through, Mr. Chair, the funding allocations are, are determined as part of the KRP's endorsement of a project. So we don't need to put, we don't need to recommend that the KRP take on those costs. That'll be figured out as part of the KRP taking on the project itself, whether that's funded through the KRP's budget or as a funding request to its member municipalities. So that's, that's all done as part of the KRP process.
So within the KRP charter, or whatever it's called, there is a funding formula for projects that are taken on by the Neehill Regional Partnership?
Uh, through the chair, not, not through its charter in terms of reference, but when a project goes forward to the KRP, as part of that, the KRP moving forward with that project, they determine how it's going to be funded, which is either through an existing funds that the KRP already holds, or as a funding call to the members taking part. So both of those are different approaches, because they, not every project is, not every member takes part in every project. So sometimes those come out as additional funding requests to the municipalities. Sometimes the KRP, so training is an example, the KRP just handles that through its own budget, which is a per capita rate charged to the municipalities each year. So it's, the funding component is figured out by the KRP as part of the moving forward with the project.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Counselor Phobes.
So if the KRP isn't going to be part of this, once we find out their answer, what would the cost be to us then if they weren't participating, roughly?
Ms. Gerbrandt.
So through the chair to Counselor Phobes, I don't expect large costs. Like, a lot of the mediums that we already run, like the newspaper ad with Neehill, social media is really minimal to push out. And just the foot traffic that FCSS and CALS already have coming in their door on a day-to-day basis to gather that, those surveys and their own social media, I don't expect the cost to be high at all. So if I were to estimate, we could probably say less than $1,000.
Okay.
Yeah, which we can easily do within our own budget. Yeah.
Mr. Gannon, please.
Uh, she answered the question. I just wanted to make sure that council understood that we believe that we can absorb the additional cost. The additional resources would just be staff time, as indicated within the, within the RFD.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, any other discussion? The motion is that we recommend this project to the Neehill Regional Partnership for their consideration. Counselor Christie.
I was just curious if we could add partnership for partnership consideration, or, so if it would read, estimate project presentation to the Neehill Regional Partnership for partnership consideration, not just consideration, so they don't put it on their agenda but not commit to it.
Mr. Hogan, if you help me out.
Through, Mr. Chair, once, once a member municipality recommends something to the KRP, it's considered at the KRP. So there's no guarantee the KRP will go forward with it, if there's no other partners that want, wish to. But in order for something to be considered by the, by the Neehill Regional Partnership, it needs to be recommended to them by a member council.
Okay.
And so what this motion does is it allows us to now put it on the KRP agenda as a, as a request, yeah.
Okay, and then the only other clarification that I would need at this point would be, while the KRP is considering, we're moving forward regardless.
Okay.
Okay, I see the nods there. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or clarification prior to me asking the question or calling the question on the motion? Okay, so the motion is that council recommend the Housing and Needs Service Estimation Project be presented to the Neehill Regional Partnership for consideration. I'm not seeing any further discussion, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Ms. Gerbrandt. And we are going to be in recess.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm going to say we're in recess for 15 minutes, so we'll be back here at 9:55.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Any questions for Ms. Von Merbach from council regarding the budget guidelines for 2026? We've recognized that's not feasible.
The con to that as well, the positive to it is that the new council comes in and it's not a thing they have to worry about and the operations of the municipality continue on and they can get their feet under them. The con to that is that they also don't really have any input in that budget, right? So like anything, there's some good things, some bad things, whereas we perceive them. In our case, when we've looked at the size of our budget, the material we need to gather, things like that, having a fully approved budget prior to the election, for us especially this year, is just it's not going to be feasible, particularly as we're also in the process of implementing a new budgeting software and everything that goes with that. The so as we looking at that, then we're left with a couple of choices. And, you know, if council deems it deems it's a direction we want to go, that we want to aim for a fully approved budget before the end of the year, we can schedule additional council budget meetings and we can try and do that. What we've looked at is saying, you know, what we feel is more beneficial is giving the the new council, which might be a lot of the same faces, it might be a lot of different faces, you never know, right? Is giving them the opportunity to get their feet under them and get some awareness or some understanding prior to making some of those decisions, right? And so if we're going to do that and we look at the calendar timing and things like that, then we're saying we could we could really rush and we could get it done. then we're saying we could really rush and we could get it done if Council wanted with additional meetings and have a final budget by December 31st. Or if we push it into that early New Year, so that January, early February, gives that council, the new council, a bit more time to get more orientation, to get more familiar with county finances. I mean, you're still not getting a lot of extra time, but it's a little bit, right? And so that's what we're recommending as an approach. And it would give that new council a bit of time to get more familiar with the numbers. You know, I'm sure that as new counselors, for those of you around the table, whenever that new council happened to be for you, is even understanding the scope and magnitude of the county's operation is a shock, right? To get into the flow of things. So that's the, when we're saying that's a choice, it's what we're recommending, is that we go that route, gives everybody just a bit of extra time, it allows our finance department during the orientation to give the new council an awareness of the county's finances at a bit better level. With that being said, what Ms. Von Merbach has outlined and is the recommendation of administration, that there will be some considerations we put forward to this council for preapproval. And so what that means is things like the capital equipment plan, which is completely funded from reserve, and that allows us to get those tenders out for those equipment replacements with months in advance, that, you know, we would bring that back to this council for a preapproval. So even before the final budget was done, those things would already be approved. Other projects like Ms. Von Merbach outlined that are grant-dependent or that are just, I'm going to use the term standard in my answer here, is so if we know that we've got three bridge files that we're going to do replacement or major maintenance on, they're non-contentious, it's just asset management, they're funded from reserves, from STIP grants, hopefully if we get them, to offset what we'd pull out of reserves, things like that we'll probably bring back for a preapproval, because then that allows us to start putting the tender together. And if we're starting to get tenders together, get tenders out late in the year or early in the New Year, that's a lot better than getting those projects approved in, say, February and not having the tender out until March, April, right? And so there'll be some of those preapprovals that we ask this council to make so that those projects can get underway, because those are, as you said, they're funded from reserves, they're fairly non-contentious, and it allows us to move on them and not build in a five, six-month delay.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Phobes.
I would just like to say thank you for the clarity on that, because I think sometimes with the public, they don't always understand. So that's all I was seeking, is some clarity for anyone who happens to be listening on why we do budget the way that we do in an election year. So thank you.
Well, I'm going to say, as we've all come into this room and sat through our first budget.
Yeah, we have.
And that's never a fun process when you're a new counselor and you are really relying heavily on the wisdom of the council previous. And oftentimes, in that first budget, you're going, they seem to think this was okay, so I do too.
So I agree to it.
So it is a process and certainly thank you for the clarity and Mr. Hogan as well in terms of understanding. Budget is always a, I guess I'm very appreciative of the amount of work that goes into that and from the staff point of view and also in terms of presenting to us as council. And so to allow a new council the time to adjust and get their feet under them is really important, so appreciate that. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah. Mr., the only thing that I might add to my answer, just in note of that clarity, so what the interim budget generally is, is you'll approve spending up to 50% of the prior year's budget for operating. It'll, I'm simplifying it quite a bit, but in general, it's that. So you're not even necessarily getting into a lot of nuanced discussions on it, it's just saying, yeah, we approved all these numbers in the operating budget last year and it's authorized to spend up to 50% of them, 50% of that amount moving forward. So as like Ms. Von Merbach said, the gas and electricity bills don't stop coming in, right? So, you know, we still pay for insurance, we still do all those things. So it just allows, it gives us that formal authorization to keep doing those things.
Okay, Deputy Reed McGee?
I just want to add in simple language, it is what is made us and our staff accountable is the budget. And so they cannot spend a dollar if the budget isn't available to do it. So literally, we're saying, if there isn't an interim budget, we would have to close the doors and do nothing for you. Shut off your water, no road grading, no one to talk to, zero. So an interim budget is critical for us to maintain services while we debate on our wholesome conversation, just for clarity.
Counselor Cunningham, please.
Probably shouldn't say this, but appreciate the fact that municipalities do that and I would encourage the federal government to do the same.
Well, while we're picking on governments, we could talk about our provincial one as well, so. Interesting. Okay, so we've covered some ground, maybe strayed across the fence or two, but that's okay, that's the fun of having these discussions. So what we are looking for is a motion that would approve the proposed 2026 budget process. And I also don't want to stifle discussion, so if there's additional questions, certainly I'm open for that as well. Counselor Phobes, please.
I'd make the motion that the 2026 operating and capital budgets for 2027 to 2029 operating forecast and the 2027 to 2031 capital forecast be prepared in accordance with the following principles, align with Council's strategic plan.
It goes on.
Oh, there's more, I can't see that far down. Thank you, Carolyn. Sustain existing service levels, maintain competitive rates, review recommended adjustments to service fees and rates as necessary, continue to implement and monitor proactive infrastructure renewal strategy, and enhance the stakeholder experience.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Phobes. All right, is there any further discussion to the motion? If not, for clarity, the motion is that the 2026 operating and capital budgets, the 2027 to 2029 operating forecast, and the 2027 to 2031 capital forecast be prepared in accordance with the following principles, align with Council's strategic plan, sustain existing service levels, maintain competitive tax rates, review and recommend adjustments to service fees and rates as necessary, continuing to implement and monitor a proactive infrastructure renewal strategy, and enhance the shareholder experience. That is the motion from Counselor Phobes. Any further discussion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. And again, thank you, Ms. Von Merbach. Appreciate always your participation here. Thank you. Okay, the next item in our agenda is 7.1, Election 2025 Special Ballots. And Ms. Vanderkuul, this says you are on this item.
That is correct. Thank you, Council. So I'm here to request Council's approval to implement special ballots for the upcoming municipal election on October 20th, 2025. First, I'll provide you some background on special ballots. You might know them better as mail-in ballots. These ballots are designed to give voters who cannot attend in advance voting day or on election day itself the ability to cast their vote. However, in order to offer this option to our residents, Council must pass a resolution authorizing it. I'll walk you through the process of how special ballots work. For a voter to obtain a special ballot, they would need to submit a request. This request can be done in writing, over the phone, in person, or even by email. If Council allows special ballots, we plan to start accepting special ballot applications on August 11th, 2025, to ensure a smooth process. We set the deadline for submitting a special ballot request to, set a deadline for submitting a special ballot request to Thursday, October 16th. This date was chosen intentionally against voters until the day before the final deadline to return their ballots to us, which is Friday, October 17th. So just to review those dates again, we'll start accepting special ballot applications on October 11th, August 11th. The last day for voters to request a special ballot package is Thursday, October 16th. And the last day for special ballots to be returned to us is 4:30 PM on Friday, October 17th. And election day is the following Monday on October 20th. Once a request is received, we'll mail a special ballots to voters shortly after nomination date. We're aiming for September 29th, but it all relies on how long it takes for us to get our ballots printed and returned to us from the printers. When the resident receives their special ballot package, they will follow the instructions provided. I'm hoping to actually have a video to show them, because there's a lot of envelopes and stuff and forms, so I'm hoping to have a video provided. And so then they can watch the video before they do open up their package. Municipal fairs actually did that for us last election, so hoping that maybe they'll step in and do that for us, so they don't have to see my face on the video. Maybe we'll get Christine, she's got the face for communications. The lecturer will then cast her ballot, just like they would at a polling station, and then they will put their ballot back in an envelope that is provided and then mail it back to Neale County, or they can drop it off at the office. To ensure residents are informed, we've developed a FAQ about special ballots, which is attached to your package. And we've also attached the Section 77 of the Local Authorities' Election Act that pertain to special ballots. So in conclusion, implementing special ballots is a step toward ensuring that every eligible voter has the opportunity to participate in this election, regardless of their circumstances on election day or advance day, and I ask for your support to make this possible. So thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions you might have. And it's also 118 days till election.
So I'm imagining in my head this podcast between our communications officer, Ms. Anderson, and our returning officer, Ms. Vanderkuul, around the local election and all the rules and regulation. Probably get a lot of views. I think I'll have to phone our communications officer and have a conversation around a new podcast suggestion. I know you're looking forward to that already, right?
Yes, I think that's already in the works.
Good, 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 good. All right, questions regarding special ballots? Fairly well described as to process. And what I would be looking for, if there's no questions or discussion, is a motion to allow for those special ballots to be in place. Counselor Cunningham?
I can make that motion, I just want to clarify, do we want that full motion read or do you just need a piece of that or?
According to the Local Elections Act, we need the whole motion.
Okay, all right, well, here we go. So I will move that Council allow for special ballot to electors who meet the requirements under the Local Authorities' Election Act. An application for special ballot may be made to the returning officer in writing, by telephone, in person, or by email. Applications for special ballots shall be submitted between August 11th, 2025, and 4:30 PM on Thursday, October 16th, 2025. Completed special ballots shall be received by the returning officer no later than 4:30 PM on Friday, October 17th, 2025. The procedures to be followed for voting by special ballot are those procedures set out in the Local Authorities' Election Act.
And thank you, Counselor Cunningham. Okay, so we now have a motion to allow special ballots. Is there any further questions or discussion? Okay, so our motion is that Council allow for special ballot to electors who meet the requirements under the Local Authorities' Election Act. An application for a special ballot shall be made to the returning officer in writing, by telephone, in person, or by email. Applications for special ballots shall be submitted between August 11th, 2025, and 4:30 PM on Thursday, October 16th, 2025. Completed special ballots shall be received by the returning officer no later than 4:30 PM on Friday, October 17th, 2025. The procedures to be followed by voting by special ballot are those procedures set out in the Local Authorities' Election Act. No further discussion, I'll call the question. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you.
I was going to ask if you need it again.
Okay, well, you go right ahead. We've had a request for a repeat read and we had a volunteer. Oh, man. Okay, thank you for that. Moving on. The next item in our agenda is 7.2, which is the Troschu Arboretum Flower Show for 2025. And again, Ms. Vanderkuul, if you could, please.
Thank you. So today, Council, I bring your request from the Troschu Arboretum. They are seeking sponsorship for their upcoming 53rd Annual Troschu Flower Show. The cost of this event last year was $2,700, with the county contributing $1,122 to this event. Administration recommends a $500 donation for this year's event, consistent with the contributions provided to the Drumheller Lions and the Troschu Egg Society for their rodeo events. Administration also recommends sponsoring this event through the Neale County's Community Enrichment Support Program. Council has budgeted $6,000 to this program in 2025, and we have spent $3,950 so far this year, with the remaining balance of $2,050. Council has the option today to support the recommended motion of sponsoring $500 to the Troschu Arboretum, or you can sponsor a different amount, or you can receive this request for information. That's the end of my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vanderkuul. Are there any questions regarding the requests for support for the Troschu Arboretum Flower Show in the 2025 year? Was, I have one question, was there a reason why we contributed the amount we did last year? Was that their request?
It was their request. And I think it was also, we did something with, it was part of Open Farm Days? I can't really remember the whole details.
Oh, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Okay. Yep, they had a big event that day. Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions, discussion? If not, I would be looking for a motion to direct how we want to support this event. Deputy Reed McGee?
I attended last year and I was very impressed with how full the hall was with all types of entries. It's really worth your while to go in there. As a community and a municipality that wants to embrace agriculture lifestyle, I think this is one of the examples of where we really show that we celebrate it and enrich our all generations, because they have a big youth component to it as well, to be part of that idea. So I would like to provide the Troschu Arboretum Society sponsorship, the amount of $500, to assist with the costs associated with hosting the 53rd Annual Troschu Flower, Baking, and Photography Show, with funds to come from the Community Enrichment Support Program.
Okay, thank you for that. The other thing I noticed in this request is that it's another organization where they're successfully transitioning from one generation to another, and they have a new coordinator, so that's great to see. Okay, so we have a motion in front of us to provide support. Is there any further discussion or questions to that motion? Okay, I am not seeing any, and so the motion is that Council provide the Troschu and District Arboretum Society sponsorship in the amount of $500 to assist with the costs associated with hosting the 53rd Annual Troschu Flower, Baking, and Photography Show, with the funds to come from the Community Enrichment Support Program. If there are no questions, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that is approved unanimously. Okay, the next item in our agenda will be 7.3. And 7.3 is Council Remuneration Review. And welcome, Ms. Khalid. And welcome, Ms. Khalid. We have not seen you for a while, so welcome here.
Thank you for that. Good morning, counsel. Today, administration is bringing forward the council remuneration review for your review and consideration. As background, on June 8th, 2021, council approved policy 3-1, council compensation and expense reimbursement policy. This policy requires that a compensation review be conducted for council remuneration every four years. As such, this council is now, this policy is now up for review. The purpose of this discussion is for council to provide guidance to administration on how the upcoming council remuneration review should be conducted. To support this, administration has outlined options for council, council's consideration. The first option would be to maintain the current process. Neale County has historically conducted reviews of council compensation internally through administration. This process involves collecting and analyzing data from comparable municipalities to evaluate how the county's current compensation framework, as outlined in policy 3-1, aligns with regional standards and council's established standards of compensation. Once the analysis is complete, administration presents its findings to council directly. Based on the information presented, council may choose to implement changes to the compensation package. This method does not include public input beyond an informational level. Alternatively, council may choose to establish a council remuneration committee composed of public members. If this option is pursued, community members would be recruited and appointed by council to serve on the committee. The role of the committee would be to meet with the administration and provide, to meet with the administration, review the current compensation policy in detail, as well as the information gathered by administration, and provide non-binding recommendations on all, on all elements of policy 3-1, including salaries, per diems, and benefits. If this option is chosen, it is recommended that a series of guidelines or parameters be developed in order to guide the process of the committee. This could include any specific questions council would like to pose to the committee itself. Should council choose to pursue this option, administration recommends that council specify the number of public members the committee should include. Once the committee is satisfied with its recommendation, administration will present an updated policy to council for implementation following the election. Should council opt for public involvement, standard per diem and mileage rates would apply. This could be absorbed within the existing budget under council contingency. Staffing considerations will be integrated into existing work plans. And with that, administration concludes its presentation and welcomes discussion from council and any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khalid. Are there questions from council? Counsel Penner, please.
We always like to get our ratepayers' opinions and stuff like that, but to me, when it comes to remuneration of council, a lot of ratepayers, or until you sit in the seat, you don't really know what's involved. So I do like the comparison with other municipalities where they're offering, and I know none of us are exactly the same of what we offer and things like that, but it's, I had no idea until I sat here, to be honest with you, and I'm, it's still, the workload at times, and, and you have no idea that it's coming, is overwhelming at times, and so I, I would find it very hard to put that on our ratepayers.
Okay, thank you for that. Other thoughts, discussion, questions? Counsel Forbes, please.
I wouldn't want to put that on our everyday ratepayers, but I wouldn't mind putting it on maybe some of our members at large, because they know what it means to sit around this table and the amount of work that goes into that, so that'd be something I would be interested in seeing, or at least being proposed to us as a council.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Cunningham.
I know, last week at Cow, when we were speaking about compensation for members at large, I mentioned I'd had a, as we do, all do, have interesting conversations at FCM and RMA and, and different venues like that. People did mention that there is some municipalities where it is the CEO that determines council compensation, which I said, I, I don't think most of us are, speaking for myself, I should say, I wouldn't feel comfortable putting that responsibility on the CEO. It, it did come up quite a bit, that there is a lot of municipalities that are going to the public group deciding so, or are coming together, I should say, to discuss that, so does administration have any idea of how many municipalities have gone that way and how it's working? Just, and within reading this, it is interesting, because then it says, like, we, we as a council would choose who, who those members are, so it's, it's an odd thing to say that we're gonna choose the public that decides what we get compensated, or how we get compensated, so it is, it's all very, it's very interesting in how it works, but just wondering what other municipalities are doing of what you're hearing kind of out there, Mr. Hogan.
So, Mr. Hogan, I guess that question was addressed to you, so I'll give you the first kick at it, where you want to go with that. I don't know, maybe Ms. Khalid has done all this research already, and she has the answer on the tip of her, oh, she's shaking her head.
Through, through the chair, there, there's a real mix out there. I don't know that it would be accurate to say there's any one, one standard. It's just how you choose to do it. As an example, some municipalities will tie council compensation to a specific comparable rate, and just whatever COLA or market adjustment is given to staff, the same one applies to member at large as in councils, and they just carry on like that. Some don't. You know, in, in a process like this, I don't think you would, it would be reasonable to go to the entire public and have them put something forward, that, there's not, the understanding has been set of the role, or how that, how that works. So if there was public engagement, whether that was the selecting of a group of residents at large, or picking from the pool of the members at large, that, you know, it does give a third party the opportunity to make a recommendation on, on that route, with guidance from council. And we, we say that because we're, you know, we're interested, I think, council's interested in what is fair and reasonable compensation for council to perform their duties. You're not as much interested in a recommendation of, it's public service, do it for free. Right, so.
You won't have many people sitting here.
Right, so that's where, that's where you would have, you would provide guidance to that, that group as to, you know, what you were looking for, if there were specific questions in the policy that you wanted them to address. In terms of what municipalities are doing, there's, there's, there's a mix out there.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Hogan. Counsel Penner.
In 2019, 2020, when it was, we had a great discussion as a council to do with remuneration, and to set an example with the downturn in the economy, and we did take, not a hit, but I mean, we did lower quite a bit, actually, we made the recommendation, and, and we all accepted it. So I think we're, we bring different aspects to this table, and I think we can have a great discussion ourselves, too, in accord with administration, around this, because I don't know how else to say it, sorry, because we did have a very good, in-depth conversation back when I said when we did lower it because of the down, the downturn, the downturn in the economy and, and, and things like that, so I think we, we could have a great discussion amongst ourselves, as what with, with assistance of administration, with the information that they bring back to us from other municipalities.
Counsel Forbes, please.
I'd also like to include the fact that it isn't just us sitting here as council, we sit on numerous amounts of committees that are very time-consuming as part of the responsibility of being a counselor. So that also needs to be considered in, when we're talking about what we're being money given to who we are for doing this job. And I don't think a lot of times, the public, including myself before I sat here, understood the amount of, I mean, I sit on housing, it has been very time-consuming, but it has been very rewarding as well, so.
Okay, thank you for that. So Counsel Christie, do you have any thoughts? I'm putting you on the spot, I know that, but I'd like to kind of get a broad perspective of how council feels about this.
I think the right committee is probably appropriate, but I don't know what that right committee is. Part of that is, I guess in the back of my mind, is what about past counselors on that committee? Somebody that understands what we're doing and, and the volume of time it takes. I appreciate the input from other counties, too, so that we're somewhat, we put our staff on a 50 percentile part of the pay scale. I don't mind being in the 50% part of that as counselors, too, provided our time is in that. So, and for sure, being on council took way more time than they told me upfront.
Brochure lies.
Thank you for that, Counsel Christie. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I, I worry about trying to find a community group that doesn't look like we're biased at how they became part of the group.
Part of that committee.
And so I don't think there is a, either answer is going to suit people thinking that we are trusted with this entire process, and so I think it's a very hard debate to have, because ultimately, I wanted to be trusted. I'd like to think history has proven that we can be trusted, especially in that time that Counsel Penner had brought up. We took a self-initiated, it was council that requested looking into a lower rate. It was not administration who brought that idea forward, it was counselors, and so I think, I like to do what we've always done personally, because I think it's worked well. I think the fact that we are looking at what the remuneration is for the next council, not for ourselves, also shows integrity. The fact that we're willing to have possibly consider the next council earn more than we are today, that spooks high of integrity, too. Usually, you know, when you start a job, you don't start higher than the last person who was there. You usually work your way up, and, and we are showing quite a bit of integrity that way, so I'm quite comfortable with keeping where we're at.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Whitstock, I'll let you weigh in.
Well, thank you, Reeve. I think if we look at the communities around us, comparable communities around us, and if we kind of use those numbers, I know there's a lot of times where provincial and federal regulations become muddled up in what compensation is, like we did end up getting taxed on our income, that made a difference, on our take-home pay. Not happy about it, but we increased our, our income to kind of compensate for that. I do believe COLA should always be part of the salary side of it, just to, just so there isn't a huge bump at the end of four years, every four years, or a drop every four years. I, I don't, wouldn't like to see the CEO making that determination, but that is job security or job insecurity, depending on which way he goes with it.
After all, we do set his wages.
Yeah. But, you know, I was just joking to Counsel Penner that maybe we should have our spouses decide, because they're more affected than possibly we are, but again, that would be, probably wouldn't be the way to go. But I think it would be, I think it'd be a good idea to get the, you know, comparables from municipalities around us, and I don't like your idea of going to the 50 percentile, Counsel Wade. I would like to be within that ballpark, not half of that ballpark, and that's my thoughts.
Okay, thank you for that, Counsel Whitstock. I guess that probably leaves me as not having weighed in. I think I, I sort of, I guess I should apologize to this council, because I think it was me who was pushing hard for us to set an example and drop our salary, and we did that. I really firmly believe that the people sitting at this table are operating at an ethical, conscious level of what's good for Neale County, and I have full trust in their ability to make the decision around council compensation. And so I agree with the thought of, and we have done this in the past, where we've gone to comparable municipalities, we've looked at compensation there, we've had a conversation around what's right and fair for this particular council, and we've set the compensation for the next council that's coming to the table. So I think that there's a lot of good in our former process, and, and I would be supportive of staying within that process, and I, I agree with you, Deputy Reeve, sometimes, how do you pick a committee that's going to do this review in a way that doesn't look like we've already biased the direction? And if we picked our spouses, we definitely probably are biasing the direction. So I'm very supportive of the process we've used in the past. I'm very, I very much trust the people at this table to make the right decision and to make a good decision, so I'm very comfortable sitting with the policy as it sits and without bringing in outside review, so. Any other discussion or questions? Counsel Cunningham, please.
So just to clarify for me, so within the council options, like it mentions the establishment of a committee, that committee could come up with recommendations, but it would still come back to council, so coun, the council is the final determination of what would happen, correct? Right, okay. So for me, I'm not really sure, like I said earlier, how that membership would work. I'll just, I'll refer that to Mr. Hogan and make him figure that out. I, I still would like to see the public be involved in that, as part of that, along with the comparisons for other municipalities, and then have all that information brought forward to council and, and make a decision on all that information, but that's, those are my thoughts on it.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Cunningham. And I apologize if I didn't include you in the roundtable, because I thought you had weighed in earlier, sorry. And I guess Counsel Forbes, did you have additional thoughts? Because I kind of thought you had weighed in also, so.
I did weigh in, but I would also be in agreeance with Counsel Cunningham, as well as, just, because then it doesn't look like it's just council making that decision. We can sit in a room with whoever we choose to sit with us, to explain the weight of this job that we have. And if we sit in that room and have that conversation, we're addressing our issues, but it also allows some input, and maybe some, not, not education, because I don't like that word, in, information that they may not have had previously before sitting in the room with us.
Okay, thank you for that. Counsel Penner, please.
Just for Counsel Cunningham and Counsel Forbes, how would we pick those public members to, or how would administration pick those public members?
Sorry, Counsel Cunningham, I'm sorry, I was writing myself a note.
I said Mr. Hogan had to do it. No, I did, but I was somewhat kidding, but, no, and that, that's a very good question, because as I mentioned earlier, like, I do find it, it is an odd process, where you'd bring a group of people in that you choose to decide what your compensation's gonna be, so I'm, I'm not 100% sure on that piece, maybe other municipalities would have thoughts on that, I'm not sure. I should have asked that of the other ones that spoke of that. I mean, we do do it for the other committees, we do sometimes have more names brought forward, and we do make choices, so I'm not sure if we would just follow that same format, or we would turn it over to administration to decide that piece, I'm, I really don't know how that would be handled.
Okay, thank you. Other thoughts, discussion, questions?
Sorry.
Counsel Penner, no, go ahead.
No, I just, just trying to wrap my head around it, I hear what you're saying and everything, but at the end of the day, we're gonna appoint those public members, and one of us is going to have a conflict of some kind, we're gonna be somehow, in my feeling, not, you know, attached or well-known to one of those people, and then it's just, you know, that could backfire on all of us, or on one of us, you know, on who we select that. I'm, I'm just trying to wrap my head around that.
Well, I'll weigh in real quick.
Okay, Counsel Forbes, please weigh in, yeah.
At the end of the day, it always comes back to council, is what I've been talking At the end of the day, it always comes back to council is what I've been taught. So, no matter what decisions are made, and I, and I'm doing this from the M D P. We had input from the public, but it really came back to council being able to determine what went into that final document. This would be no different.
Counselor Penner, please.
So, it'll come back to us before we actually are going to give administration a go-ahead to do it that way? Like to find out, you just, we want to find out more information on how other councils have picked this, these public members? Not necessarily bringing this policy back to us, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Well, I'm just curious to see, because there is such an outcry sometimes with things that we do as council, that the public don't always feel like they have input. This would be a great way for that to happen. And having the board members that have sat as members at large or previous counselors that have sat at this table, they have the understanding that maybe the general public doesn't know all the ins and outs of. So, some type of, I don't even know what that looks like, true story. But to find out what other municipalities are doing would be, would be valuable to making the decision on how we move forward with this.
No, go ahead, Counselor.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
So, my question, I, I think we already have laid a few questions to our administration. I think they're on, they're ready for answers, so I'm just going to add. Do we have the freedom to say, we would like to have a public committee that meets certain criteria, such as prior municipal experience? Prior, so whether it's a previous C A O or a previous committee member? Or, or is that outside of what public participation definition should be? Should it be simply open to anyone to apply? Where is the, that's the theory that I'm struggling with? Because I, I will always advocate for public participation whenever we can. It's a more expensive, longer-term way of doing anything. So, we also have to be condescending of that, that this takes more time and money. But I, and, but this is, always, public is great. But in this circumstance, a general public without some criteria, I think is a dangerous form. So, what are our, what are, are we allowed to do when it comes to looking at a committee?
Okay, I am going to go to you, Counselor Whitstock, and then perhaps Mr. Hogan, I'll let you weigh in. I'm formulating some ideas in my own head, but go ahead, Counselor Whitstock.
Okay, thank you Reeve King. I think if we're going to have a council remuneration committee, we are pretty much going to be stuck with what their recommendation is. Because if we put this committee together, they come back with a recommendation. I don't know if it's going to be there or if it's going to be there. Why did we bring them together? It was to determine what our remuneration is. And for us to say, well, wait a minute, we, we don't like your idea, we love your idea, we don't really care about your idea. Because if it's non-binding, then why did we do it? If we're going to make up our minds at the end. So, if we are going to do a remuneration committee, we're stuck with those findings. How you picked the remuneration committee, there's going to be, that's, that's going to be a hard one for me. But we can't just ignore what they come back with as far as findings go.
Mr. Hogan, I assume that should we go forward with a committee like that, there would be a process and some parameters built into what they would be doing on our behalf. But again, Mr. Hogan, I'll let you weigh in now and just offer your opinion on where that might go.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I think the, our, as administration, our recommendation is that should you go the route where you have some form of public involvement, that there'd be very clear guidelines given to that, to that group. As Counselor Whitstock said, you, you won't be bound by them technically, because ultimately, council has to approve the project. But you're asking for that feedback for a reason, right? So, you might not technically be bound to it, but realistically, you're, you got to consider it, right? So, that, that point I think is accurate. The, in terms of if you went that route, how you would choose them, it's really your choice. The, this, this isn't a legislated process. This is a process that you as a council are choosing to conduct. And you're just choosing how to conduct it. Whether we're going to, either way, administration is going to go out to comparable municipalities and collect the data. And whether we're putting that data directly in front of you as council with recommendations or in front of that committee is, is the question, right? So, what other municipalities are doing, are doing this? I'd suggest to council, you're free to do whatever you as council want to do. And so, if that process is that you, you want some input from members who aren't on council, then that's, that's the decision. If, you know, you're, you as council, or you're going to be working from the same data set if you go that direction, right? I believe it was Counselor Forbes earlier who said in the meeting that one of the difficulties is individuals who aren't around this table who come in are not going to understand the effort or the requirements of being around this table, right? So, and, and that's, that's a valid, valid concern, I think. The, to Deputy Reeve McGee's questions, how you would choose those individuals, again, it's your process, it's up to you. And so, can you put constraints on them? You absolutely can. And whether that's constraints, requirements, however you want to phrase it, right? So, if it's just a membership at large where we're soliciting, we're soliciting people to put their names forward, then that, that's one option, right? And there's, there's pros to that, there's, there's cons to it as well. There, you might have, you know, the option, the idea had come up that it would only, that it'd be limited to former councils. That's an option if, should you choose to do it. Current members at large, also an option should you choose to do it. You can set those parameters however you like. Ultimately though, I will say, they're going to be working off the same data set. So, when administration goes out and gathers that data, it's just a matter of whether we're putting it to the committee first or whether we're bringing it directly back to you, but it will be the same data.
Counselor Penner, I defer to your wisdom.
I'm just going to further on to what Mr. Hogan said. Administration is going to bring us back a very in-depth detail. I think you've heard what we, we are looking for here. And, and a decision like this is in open session, it's, wouldn't be in closed session. So, our packages are, well, we would make sure it's in open session. And our packages are available to the public the week before, or the end of the week before, the Thursday, Friday. So, I'm sure we will hear from those rate payers on both sides of it before our meeting. So, we could bring that discussion back to our council meeting when we have that in-depth discussion. So, like I said, I think administration has heard us, that we, we really want some in-depth comparisons and things like that from, let me spell it, similar size.
Okay, so we've gone around and around a little bit. I would like to have a little bit of a conversation around what the composition of a non-council committee might look like. And I have a number of names in my head. So, I would rather do that in a closed session for five, 10 minutes at the most, to just talk about who we might include in that, if we were going to go forward with a non-council committee. So, if that's to council's agreement, I would suggest we have like a five or 10-minute closed session just to, and I'll toss out some ideas that I have and just see what your reaction might be. Are we agreeable to that? Counselor Cunningham, you have a comment first.
Sorry, just some clarity, so you're going to put out like members of the public that you may be interested in or?
Along the guidelines of what we've already been talking about in terms of members at large, former counselors, those kind of things, just to give us something to consider. There's no way that we want to be having a conversation around person A, B, C, or D in an open session, so. And again, it's just guidance to administration in terms of what we're thinking. If that's agreeable with council, that would be my suggestion. Counselor Forbes.
Well, I'd make the motion to go into closed session then.
Okay, so I have a motion for closed session at 10:57, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously.
Oh, she's opposed.
Oh, sorry, opposed? Oh, sorry, it's just carried. I'm sorry, I didn't get that in there quick enough. Sorry. 10:57 and 11:04. Are we back online, Carolyn? Okay, thank you. We had a motion to return to open session at 11:04. It's now 11:05, and I'm going to call our meeting back to order. And we will continue our conversation around council compensation. Any further discussion related to how we want to go through the council remuneration review? We've all gone very quiet. Counselor Cunningham.
So, I know it's not totally the same, like it's not committee to public hearings and stuff. But there, there is instances, and I think Counselor Forbes mentioned earlier, we did do that public engagement with the municipal development plan. And there was times when we, when we perhaps made decisions that went against what, what the public was saying. Like I said, a little bit different, but I mean, I know we had a public hearing recently with a land use designation where we heard from the public, and we still went, we chose to go the other direction. So, I do understand the concern of having people come in and giving their thoughts and then going in a different direction. But we, it is sometimes part of what we do, we make the decision that we feel is best at the time. I'm always going to make my decisions based on very fulsome information. And for me, that involves hearing from the public. And so, that's why I would want public input on this particular consideration.
Thank you for that comment. Any further discussion? I guess my only other comment that I'm going to make in this conversation is, again, I'll just reiterate the fact that I do trust the ability of sitting at this table. And I have confidence in this council to be able to make this decision at whatever point that comes to us, so. If there's not a lot of further discussion, I would be looking for direction in terms of a motion for administration. Unless there, I don't want to cut off the discussion, but. Counselor Whitstock.
All right, let's get this on the.
All right, to get this on the table, I would move the council direct administration to conduct an internal analysis of council remuneration and present the findings to council for consideration.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Whitstock. So we do have a motion on the floor now that council direct administration to conduct an internal analysis of council remuneration and present the findings to council for consideration. Any further discussion to the motion that's on the floor? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd like to discuss a little bit about what we could expect would be in these, in the information brought forward. So are you going to be looking not just at what is happening around us, but maybe in how the work has changed in the last four years? What we foresee is the future, some of those other background pieces of information? Is there any pieces of information we would like to see sure to be addressed? I think should be part of the conversation.
So I guess, Mr. Hogan, you're going to polish your crystal ball for us? But anyway, I'll allow you to respond to Deputy Reeve McGee.
To you, Mr. Chair, I think that consideration is part of the process. So if we, what we're looking for is really a process question here. The next step, whether it's this motion or a different one, is we would come back to council to pose those exact questions. Is what are other parts of the policy you'd like to consider? I know there's been instances over the course of this term that when we redid, when we redid the previous policy, and we lumped a bunch of things into the base per diem, and then there were a number of things we came along that said, geez, it really looks like that's part of the base per diem, and maybe it shouldn't be. So there are questions like that that are out there. And I think regardless of the approach that council takes, we'd come back to ask you, what are those things that you really want to, you want to look at or consider? And so whether it's you, committee, whatever it is, we'd bring that back for a discussion as part of the next step in the process.
Great, thank you.
Any further question or comment to the motion that's on the floor giving direction to administration? Oh, sorry, Counselor Cunningham?
No problem. Yeah, so I think I'm fairly open about this, but I'm happy with the motion, but I still, the public piece is missing for me, so I will be voting against it, just kind of aligning with our strategic plan about the openness, engaging stakeholders, and respecting all opinions. We don't have to agree with them, but I still want to always hear from them. So that's why I'll be a no on this particular motion.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further discussion, question? It's the last chance before I call the question on the motion. Counselor Whitstock, please.
Okay, the reason I made the motion that I did make, because I could very easily have made the optional number two motion. But that would have to have been changed, because I cannot see us providing or bringing in a remuneration committee and then not abiding by their determination. You know, if it said binding recommendation to council for consideration, then I could have very well made that motion. But I do not believe that that's the direction that we should go. We've done this before. We've done it with council members sitting at the table, because after all, we are the ones that sit here. We know how much time we put into this. And we're not here to get rich. And I don't believe any of us are here to be greedy. But we do need to be compensated for the amount of time that we spend here. So that is why I made the motion. I mean, if it gets defeated, I'm fine with that. But that is why I made the motion.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Counselor Phobes, please.
So if this motion had public input in it, would you be in favor then, Counselor Cunningham?
I would, but I don't, I don't think the motion's intent is with that, so, yeah.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
Well, I see a part of the next, with this motion, should it pass, the next step could be that we request a public component to it. So might it be a survey, might it be a chance to call your council, or whatever? Those types of things could be outlined if you want to. But I'm not sure how that would look. I think, do I understand you correctly, Counselor Cunningham? You really would like to have a very formal way of saying, this is formally what our public has put together? That's your point, correct? Thanks.
So that's where the disagreement in terms of direction happens to be in the room around, right now, the non-binding recommendation from a public committee, which is very hard, as some of us see, to not accept that, regardless of what it is, and an internal analysis of council remuneration that does not necessarily include any public input. Keeping in mind Counselor Penner's comment earlier about how our packages are public, and this conversation would be a public conversation. So there's opportunity for individual counselors to receive input from ratepayers when that conversation would come forward, so. All right, I am going to, unless somebody has a real burning need to say anything else, I am going to bring the question to the floor that council direct administration to conduct an internal regional analysis of council remuneration and present the findings to council for consideration. Motion by Counselor Whitstock. I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Ms. Khalid, thank you very much. We always seem to assign you the fun ones. I very much appreciate you being here today and bringing this for our consideration. So thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
At this point, we have a delegation that's coming at 11:30 a.m. So I am going to say that we are in recess until such time. So let's say we're in recess till 11:29. That way, we'll be back in our chairs when they show up.
Okay, it's eleven thirty and I am going to call our council meeting back to order. The item in front of us on our agenda is a delegation. Nathan and Tina Bjorn. Did I get that right? Okay, thank you. Welcome here. And perhaps before you start your presentation, I'm going to allow council to introduce themselves and then maybe the senior leadership that's here in the room and then we'll let you make your presentation. So Counselor Cunningham, if you would please, I'll start with you.
Hello, Laura Lee Michelle Cunningham, Division Five. Thank you so much for coming in. We really appreciate it and we welcome it and we're a pretty nice group of people here, so just feel comfortable with us.
Morning, my name is Jerry Whitstock, Division Three, that's the Acme Linden area.
Good morning, Debbie Penner, Division Two, down the Swallow area.
Good morning, and I'm Ken King. I represent the Northeast, which is Division Seven, and currently serving as Reeve, so welcome here.
Hello, I'm Faye McGee, I represent Division One.
Good morning, Carrie Phobes, Division Four.
Wade Christie, I'm Division Six, from the Northwest corner.
Welcome, Mike Hogan, Chief Administrative Officer.
Welcome, Carolyn Vanner Cole, Legislative Services Manager.
Good morning, Kevin Gannon, Director of Community Services.
Morning folks, I'm Mike Seer, Director of Infrastructure.
Hello, Teresa Cochran, Director of Corporate Services.
So, welcome here. This is livestreamed and recorded, so the only reminder I'll give you is when you're speaking, if you would just push the button on your microphone, the microphone should turn red and then we'll be able to hear you, plus it'll be captured for the livestream. So if you wanted to just introduce yourselves and then go right ahead into your presentation, that'd be great.
I'm Nathan Bjorn, this is my wife Tina, and thank you for having us. We don't have a real elaborate presentation or anything for you. We experienced a failure on a water bowl. It was just a float that needed an adjustment, which caused a fairly high consumption of water that showed up on our invoice from, I believe it was February through March. So we're just here to discuss, we're hoping we can plead guilty to a lesser charge. It was obviously a failure on our end, but we were hoping we could maybe get a reduced rate, the water at cost. I'd also like to look into if there's things we can do in the future to safeguard this from happening to ourselves or other ratepayers. You know, it's a fairly devastating amount of money and like to prevent that in the future, so I'm open to some discussion or suggestions on anything in that regard. We have been paying our bills with kind of a guesstimated on historic bills, on what we think we would owe, so we're not here to say we're not paying. We're just hoping we can come to something that works for both parties here.
Great, thank you for that. Is there anything additional you'd like to add before I give council an opportunity to ask questions?
I have some points as far as timelines. I don't know if it's something you'd like to hear or if it's appropriate at this point in the presentation, but I did have a note that that there was a thirteen day gap between the meter being read and the utility man arriving on our property to find the problem. So that's a fairly significant amount. Our average cost per day was over seventy-five dollars a day, so times thirteen days, that's close to a thousand dollars, where I do feel we probably should have detected that a little bit earlier. So, anyway, we discovered this leak ourselves. The water bowl is located in a corral that was not in service, so it was not being checked on a daily basis like it would if there was cattle in the corral. So that's how it got away on us. It wasn't a fast leak, it was just trickling over, so it was obviously a very long, slow leak. So anyway, we discovered that, we believe, on the sixth of April. County came on the eighth to investigate. At that time, I was fairly concerned, as you could imagine, so I actually came into the office here with the checkbook, hoping we could just settle it for a little better amount, and I was told that it would be discussed that week in the council meeting and somebody would reach out to us, but we didn't hear anything and the invoice came in the mail. So, April twenty-first, we just emailed, or actually we put it in an envelope, old school, we mailed it back with a note just saying nobody's reached out to us in regards to this. So by the twenty-eighth, we had contact with the county and we were offered, we were given two options. We can either just pay the invoice in full, or we can come present at a delegation. So here we are. May ninth, we made a payment of three hundred dollars to cover what we typically would pay per invoice. June third, we submitted the delegation request form and that brings us to today.
To today, okay, good.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, so council, you have heard the request. Are there questions for our presenters? Nathan, who's described most of the situation. So Counselor Cunningham, please.
So, through the Reeve, to Mr. Hogan, I'm just wondering if we can get some clarity. It sounds like the Bjorns met with the county on April twenty-first, so I'm just wondering what was the, it sounded like they were directed then that they would be able to meet with council, so just wondering where the, like, what happened between that time and maybe why they weren't brought forward to council a little bit earlier.
Mr. Hogan, if you would please.
Through the Reeve, that's a question I'll have to get back to Counselor Cunningham, I don't know those details.
If I may, Ken, we were presented with two different dates. The first date, we were not able to make, which I believe was your meeting in May, so the reason it's at the end of June is just due to our scheduling, so. It was the eighth of April that we were informed that this would be talked about, and then the twenty-first is when we had the phone call received from Carolyn, I believe it was, offering the delegation, so.
Okay, so the-
Excuse me, the twenty-eighth of April, we were offered the delegation. We mailed the invoice and a letter in on the twenty-first of April. Thank you.
Okay. So some of this time lag has been on your part as well as potentially on our part?
The fact we're meeting today was our chosen date of the two we were offered, yes.
Okay, super. Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that, Nathan. All right, Counselor Phobes, please.
I'm not sure who answers this, I'm thinking Mr. Mike Seer, because you do the water, correct? Has the county had these issues before with ratepayers, where the water consumption was more than what they realized due to an issue on their farm?
Mr. Seer.
So through the chair, not to my knowledge, on these, we, obviously there are water leaks in smaller capacities on a lot of properties outside of the, our point of custody basically ends at the property line, or at the lift's meter, the lift, meter lift, depending on what the installation of it is. So we don't necessarily monitor the flows outside of that. Just a little bit of, maybe for council's knowledge here, just a little bit of the background on the system right now. So this is the Mount Vernon system, so this is fed directly from the Town of Three Hills distribution system. There's no reservoirs currently on this, the system here, it's all fed through, the pressure's provided by the town, with some supplementary on the counties and there as well. So the water is monitored daily by our staff, but we do not have any technological means of doing that. It's just a paper notification on the flows that are going out there. So just looking at the flows on this and looking at the historic values that we've looked at the last couple of years on this, there wasn't significant changes to the flow rates that we could determine on this. And even a little bit after the leak was repaired here, we see some of the similar flow rates going through that system with zero leaks on it at that point. So, just some of the indication on to if the county was able to, and I guess some of the questions here that you've asked, as well as what we're looking to do to modify this in the future and to potentially have better reporting structures on this. We are looking at digitizing this, making some triggers as far as if there is trending that isn't necessarily being, that raises any red flags on that sort of thing. Implementing a potential SCADA system, if we're looking at that program that the council had approved last year for the grant funding. So, there are a few things, I think, looking back here, I don't necessarily see anything that operations may have been able to indicate as a real red flag on these sort of things, but just looking at, always looking at improvement in our systems here and if there is potentials for that kind of thing. We're open to investigating on this as well.
Counselor Phobes, please.
So the Mount Vernon system, who operates that?
Through the chair, it's the Neal County staff.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions for the Bjorns? And I don't want to belabor the delegation time. As a council, we'll have a conversation around our response later in the meeting today, but if you have other comments you'd like to add, Nathan, I don't want to cut you off, but certainly-
Sure, yeah, thank you. One thing I think could be a huge factor in reducing this in the future would be if we could please go to a thirty-day billing cycle. I think this kind of spanned between two, so my most current invoice is six thousand one hundred eighty dollars and forty-six cents in water, and if these things could be caught in thirty days as opposed to sixty, you're, I'm not a mathematician, that's fifty percent reduction. So, anyway, I would plead that, you know, possibly we could look at getting the water at the cost of, I believe the county purchases the water from the town, is that correct?
Yep. Yes, that's correct, we do-
We'd be very appreciative if we could get it at the town's cost. I just, I feel it inappropriate for someone to profit from our misfortune, but I'm also not here to run away from what I owe.
I totally get what you're saying and I understand that you're not trying to avoid your responsibility in any way. That's not how I'm taking the conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. Yes, to this date, we've paid eight hundred dollars on this bill, just to show we're doing what we can here, and I thank you all for having us, so.
Okay. Yep, just give a couple of further clarifications from council, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll go to Counselor Cunningham, then Counselor Penner.
Okay, sorry, you did mention this earlier, so, and I know you said you kind of chose the date, but can you go back to that beginning of April when you said you had contacted the county and I think you said-
Yeah, it was the morning of, right when the utility man left our yard, I grabbed my checkbook and came to town. It's been about nine AM on April eighth. I came and sat down with Regina and just left my cell number and I was assured that it was on the agenda for the upcoming meeting that week, and somebody would be reaching out to us, letting us know how to proceed.
And so then, when did you hear back from that?
We didn't hear anything until the twenty-eighth of April.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Penner, you have a question, please?
Not a question, just thanks for coming in. As a rancher, this is one of your worst nightmares. I've been there, done that. It's sickening, but I'm not hooked up to municipal water, my own wells. You wake up and it's rushing past your front door or whatever. It's happened numerous times. Mother Nature throws things at you and whatnot else to cause the floats to stay open, you know, and so I do feel for you. I know what, to lose that amount of water and then have to pay for it. We'll have an in-depth discussion this afternoon on what, how, or if we're able to assist you, but I do fully understand that sick feeling to know that that much water has just went through the trough.
Yes, thank you.
And Counselor Phobes, please.
Say council chooses to not support what you're asking, how much time would you need to be able to pay that back? Because I don't know what your life is like, so that's why I'm asking this question, because it always gives it to me in the back of my mind on what you, I want to make sure it's workable for you as well if we do have to go the route of you have to pay.
Sure, thank you. I mean, to be honest, I could write you a check today for the full amount. I just don't feel that's the best management of my money, so to me, it wouldn't hurt to make some quarterly installments, just in case we have other unforeseen. I mean, we don't know one hundred percent if we're out of the woods on this yet either. I spent a lot of time in the well pit yesterday staring at that meter.
Watching it?
We had quite a stare down me in that thing, and it appears to be steady as a rock, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping this is the end of it. One other point, and I don't say this to sound confrontational at all, but it, just looking at the volumes here, I'm curious if there is recent calibrations done on, you know, typically an annual calibration on point-of-sale meters is common practice for any utility.
Okay, well, that could be included in our conversation later. Mr. Gannon, you had a comment you would like to make.
Thank you, through the chair. As far as the water meters move forward, it's on a very simplistic system that are actually, they go through a significant testing, ensure that they meet the calibration portion. Most meters, when they do fail, they fail in favor because the mechanism is not turning. So when the mechanism is turning, it usually is registering appropriately. So the older the meter gets, the actual, there's a possibility that it fails in favor of the owner versus the water provider.
Okay. If there are no other questions at this point, what I, is there anything additional you want to add? Tina, I hate to say it, but it almost looks like you want to say something. And, I mean, this is your opportunity to provide us with what you feel is your side and your input, and so I don't want to short you, but I'm also aware that as council, we have other things. So, please, it's, this is your chance really to provide us from your side.
I just, I guess just highlighting again that, as far as the timeline Laura Lee was asking about, just that timeline again, between the meter being read and then being notified by the county that, I mean, obviously it was enough to say that it's not red flagged, it wasn't enough. It was red flagged enough for that utility- It was red flagged enough for that utility worker to call us. And he, I answered the phone and he said, there was an unusual usage of water this month. And I said, yes, we found a leaking water bowl yesterday. We're aware. And then when he said $4,300, I was like, whoo! We weren't anticipating that. And so I think it was red flagged enough from your end and maybe just as that was built out. So I guess that 13-day gap between the reading and the notification going out, we appreciate that for that phone call, but there is that gap there too. It was obviously red flagged, but there was that 13-day gap between the reading and that phone call.
And thank you for that. I knew you had something on your mind. So Counselor Whitstock, please.
Well, I'm sorry to hear you have that problem because it is never a good problem to have. My question would be, when do you anticipate the leak to start it?
Is this on? So if we were to go back on the weather pattern, it happened, I believe, right after a significant freeze thaw type of situation where it was just enough to cause a leak in the, in the valve, you know, some ice moving around. There was, there was some adverse weather and of, I didn't actually write that down. That's a good question. But when I did find the leak, it was, the bowl was full and just overflowing out the sides. It wasn't, there was nothing split. It was just a simple float adjustment that it was requiring. So I, I can't, I wish I could give you a, a date, Jerry, because I would have.
I wish you could too.
I would have fixed it then. But all, all I can tell you is, is when we found it and then we can kind of work the volumes back that way if we need to, so.
Yeah, because with the math that I did, it was a substantial leak and it continued for quite a number of these, like 54 days at a full.
Yeah, it was, I believe, a 59-day billing period, right? So.
So that would, the, the bill would have come in on the March 31st?
Yeah, I have, I have the last two here. So meter reading on the 26th of March.
Okay.
So yeah, the, the billing period is stated as February 1st, 2025 to March 31st, 2025.
Okay, thanks for the info.
All right. So thank you, Tina and Nathan. I do appreciate you being here today and bringing this to our attention. I can't tell you what council's decision will be. However, we will be having a conversation about this today. And so you should get some kind of response from us relatively immediate.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Again, very much appreciate you being here and certainly we welcome your thoughts and your concern and appreciate that, so. I can't speak for all of us at this point, so, but we will, we will deal with it today.
Well, thank you for having us and thanks for the hospitality.
If there's anything else we can help with in the future, please reach out.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item that we have on our agenda is 8.1, which is the Neale Regional FCSS 2024 Annual Report. And Ms. Vanderkuul, when ever you're ready, please.
Thank you, Brave King. So earlier today, Shelley Jackson Berry presented the 2024 FCSS Annual Report to council. As is marked Shelley's farewell, farewell tour, I'd like to take a moment on behalf of Neale County's administration to express our heartfelt gratitude for her remarkable contributions to our community. Shelley's dedication and service have left elastic impact and she will be greatly missed. Shelley's presentation today was for information purposes. We, we just now require a motion for council to receive this report for information.
Okay, thank you for that, Ms. Vanderkuul. So again, I think we'll just reiterate the fact that we're very grateful for 26-plus years of service to our community on behalf of Ms. Jackson Berry. Shelley has always been an amazing promoter of our community and the people who live within, as well as an amazing supporter for those who have need within our community. So again, just on my own behalf and on behalf of Neale County, just a very, thank you to Shelley. Opportunity for a motion to receive for information. Counselor Phobes.
So moved.
Thank you. So we have a motion that we received, the Neale Regional Family and Community Support Services 2024 Annual Report for Information. No discussion, so all those in favor, and that's carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. Well, it's fresh in our minds. The next item on our agenda is 8.2, which is the 2025 Residential Water Leak Concern. And I guess, Ms. Nyman, welcome. And Ms. Vanderkuul, welcome back. So anytime you're ready.
Morning.
Good morning.
Okay, so we just had the delegation, so this is our request for a decision on the 2025 Residential Water Leak Concern. So I'll just give you the background kind of from us. So this leak was found during the billing process for the February 1 to March 31 period. Administration staff identified unusually high water consumption on one water meter. As part of our standard procedures, the utility department foreman was notified. He visited the property to inform the residents of the high record water usage. I have that he visited the property. They did say that he called first. So if, that is, like, he, he had called and then he did go out to the property, so just to clarify.
So do we know, sorry, Ms. Nyman, do we know when the call was made and when the visit was done?
It would have been April 8th. That's from an email we got, reporting the concern.
So the phone call was made on the 8th and then the visit was later?
It was that day.
Same day?
Yeah, same day. We, because it was caught during, during billing, so operation was notified. And it was a huge amount of water, so it was dealt with right away by operation side.
Okay.
And then when they had talked to them, the residents had already known about it and had shut it off. And I think that they had known about it the day before or two days.
I think he gave us April 6th as the day they just.
Yeah, like they had already kind of known and shut it off. They just had, didn't know to the extent of what that, what that was. They had recognized that it was leaking, shut it off, resolved the issue, but they didn't know until we had contacted them that this was a massive amount of water that had gone through. So at that time, what was identified when we read was 1,077.7 cubes of water. It had been recorded, so that was when it was read at that time for that billing period. Oh, yeah, so during the notification, the resident had indicated they had already investigated the issue, discovered an animal water trough overflowing on the private side of their water service connection, and they had shut off the water. So in a delegation to council today, the resident requested a reduction in the amount billed or an adjustment to the water consumption charges. And we currently have no process in place or policy to deal with this kind of event. So this is kind of new, so that's why it was brought forward to council for guidance. So some discussions, the utility department did confirm that the meter was working, like they went out and they checked the meter to make sure it wasn't an error. And then just checked the Mount Vernon system, that it did show the large amount of water going through. So we kind of ruled out at that time errors on our, our equipment. And then we did re, do a reading and we realized that it's going to affect them twice on two separate bills. So the bill that they got, and it was going to also show up on the next bill because it was still leaking at the point the reading was taken. So they were going to be impacted by two bills and it was going to take that amount of time to know the, the full impact. So that's, the bill amounts on the, on the, the build amounts were 1,077.7 cubes. And then the second bill was the remainder of it, which is 475.4 cubes. So the total amount for this incident was 1,553.10 cubes. The property's owner's average water consumption, we just kind of averaged it out, is usually about 62.22 cubes per billing cycle. So we identified that 1,428.66 cubes was above their average usage. So that's what we kind of determined was the amount of water that was not, was out of the normal.
So you said, sorry, again, Ms. Nyman, you said that within a normal billing cycle, they would use about 62-plus cubes in a billing cycle? Is that the number that you gave?
Yeah, 62.2.
And that's a 60-day billing period?
Yeah.
Okay, yes?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Because we bill every two months, right?
Two months, yes, yes. It gets very confusing because we don't bill monthly. But yeah, that's what we averaged out, that they, their normal billing over the two months would be.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so in addition, today, they, because of the time and then bringing forward it to council, stretched, they haven't paid because they were waiting for a decision, so we do have penalties on the account. So just to take into consideration today of, that there's 64.4, or $66.40 that has incurred as well. And then we just kind of have options that you could do today. One is, of course, accept the report for information. Approve a partial reduction in the amount. You can approve a full reduction of the excess consumption and, or approve a full reduction of, sorry, full reduction of the bill and penalties incurred. And then we just have recommended a report for information.
Okay, thank you. So when is our normal meter read timing? Like, how far before an end of a month do we read the meter?
Usually it can start anywhere. Normally, we have the meters loaded and we start reading the last, the week of the month. So there is about six different areas that get read in a month. So we load them up and have them ready and then they start reading that week. And then, once those are all submitted, we have per policy for billing. We have, we need to get the bills out by the 10th of the month. So your utility bills always get to you before the 10th as per policy.
Okay, so the Bjorn's were suggesting that there was about 13 days between the meter read and our visit?
Yes.
So I assume when they're reading meters, they're reading lots of them in any given day?
Any, yeah, yeah, it stretches over.
Do they read them electronically or?
Yes, so they read them through a machine that gets uploaded. And then they kind of drive out and the machine picks up all the meter readings. Yeah, and then they, so they go to certain areas.
Yeah, so it's not like he's sitting there holding something that's reading it and he goes, oh, it's just, he's driving by.
It just collects data. Yeah, collects all the data from that area.
And then somebody else.
And then we have a snapshot in time, yeah.
And then when it comes around to billing, then they go, that might be an excess amount of water.
Yeah, so when we do billing, we usually look to see if there is leaks and just give people a heads up that there might be potential leaks. This one was really fast, like it went, like it was a lot of water going really fast. And I'm not quite sure if it was even flagged as being 35 days, like it kind of goes by days as a flag. And I don't even know if it made that error because it was just so much water going through so fast.
No, that just helps clarify kind of what our process is, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so this, the, it can be caught a couple of ways, and this one was just caught when we were looking at the bills.
Okay. Questions? Counselor Whitstock, please.
Okay. This question will be to Mike. It'll probably direct it to the other Mike. So it is on the Mount Vernon system, is that correct?
Yes.
And there will be a regulator, not a regulator, a flow meter or a flow valve on there? Those are set for four gallons a minute?
Mr. Zier.
Through the chair, you're talking about at the actual residential service?
Excuse me?
At the residential service, that's what you're?
Yes.
Yeah, this is a one-inch meter, I believe, is that's correct? That's what I had read in the document. Yes, so, sorry, through the chair, that's a one-inch meter. Unfortunately, this eliminated the, the ability to data log on that. I don't know if that regulator was in place. I don't have the information right now for the point.
Well, I'm not talking regulator. I'm talking about the actual flow restrictor that, that is restricted to four gallons a minute.
Right, correct. That, that's a good question. I don't have the information on that.
Okay, because if it was restricted to four gallons a minute, using my math, and I'm using the 1,428 cubes, which is over and above what they, they used, they used 62, but if you eliminate that from the 15, whatever the numbers are here, I don't have it right in front of me, but the 1,500. So anyway, we've got 1,428 cubes. You take that and if you figure that it's a four-gallon-a-minute leak, that leak would have been going for 54 and a half days at four gallons a minute to come up with that number. That is a substantial leak. So that's why I'm wondering if there is a flow restrictor of four gallons a minute there, because if you were blowing four gallons a minute onto the ground and you're only bringing in four gallons a minute, you would have definitely had a hard time with a dishwasher or a toilet or anything. That's really unfortunate.
Mr. Zier.
Yeah, thank you for that. I, I've just been able to receive clarification from our manager utilities that because Mount Vernon is, as everyone knows, a previous water co-op that we inherited. Not every, not every service has a restrictor on it. And I believe only the new ones from the date we took that on had actually had the restrictors placed on them, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that would make sense why.
That explains a lot, why you wouldn't have noticed it in the house.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for the answer.
Other questions? Counselor Cunningham?
So when I first heard about this, I, I did look to our policies. So I think Ms. Nyman kind of referred to it earlier, but in our policy 16-dash, what is it, 2, I think?
20.
20, thank you. I noticed, like, it hasn't been reviewed since 2019, so, I mean, I would really like to see this maybe be reviewed and maybe this is, because when I looked at it, I'm like, I'm really not sure where we go with this because I don't think in the time I've been sitting here, we've had a case kind of like this, so.
No, no, I've, I've never seen one like this before.
But I was just curious. But I was just curious, um the the April eighth, when um Mr. Bjorn said he had spoke to the county, and then he said he never heard back to April twenty-eighth, so I'm just wondering, in that twenty-day timeframe, like what happened during that timeframe, or why maybe he wasn't?
I'm not sure about how many days um it took to to go through it, like I can't, I can't, like I don't have those numbers, um but as soon as it happened, um we talked- I talked to Nathan first, but then it had to go through a whole bunch of people, because this is a massive leak. Um, so there was um discussions in the background of what to do going forward, making sure like if it was on our end, if we could find something that it doesn't, it goes as a different process if we found faulty equipment, um and all that kinda stuff. So I'm not sure um like the timeline there, but I know it went up, and then we decided that the best course of action, or kind of the only course of action that they had at this time, was to bring it forward to council, and then um I think it was already too late to bring it to that council meeting, so they were given options. Um, so we let them know to talk to to Carolyn, she booked them in with the date, um but I think it might have been too close at that time to bring it to that council meeting, and um at that time, the leak was confirmed to be um not happening anymore, like it was already um dealt, kind of like shut off, confirmed, we we wasn't going anymore, so the urgency wasn't, I guess, there to bring it forward so fast to to bring it into council, yeah, for the May one. I, but I think, I'm not quite sure on the timing of that, I don't know if we have that. You, did you write it down? Yeah, sorry, Marie.
So through the chair, I've got a little bit of documentation on this, um I have on April eighth, where Regina let me know about the issue, um where I started doing some follow-up in terms of, we looked at our policy, we tried to figure out kinda some of the backstory, I asked a bunch of questions on how often has this happened before, what was the process, how did this happen? I brought it forward to my director, um we looked again at policy, we had some more discussions, went back to Regina to kinda advise that a delegation to council is really the only way that any relief could be obtained by this resident. Um, I do have an email from the twenty-fifth, where Regina had indicated she'd spoken to him, um there's a bit of a delay between that eighth and twenty-fifth, but that is process in the background, a lot of things take time and research and communication in order to ensure that we have all of our bases covered, we've untug any information we might need, we've made sure it's not an error on our end, um that's a fairly typical. I also know that during that time, we were bringing tax rate by law forward, and I definitely took a lot of Regina's time in that timeframe, so that would be a fairly standard timing process of trying to um address something like this in the background and ensure we have everything covered, before we tell a resident that they have to come forward to council is the only solution.
Well, we were sure by the eighth of April that the problem was resolved, and that's what he indicated, by the sixth of April, he'd solved the leakage side of things. So what happens from that day going forward, in terms of process and getting to council and so on, is just a matter of time and scheduling. And like you said, all the conversation that has to happen in the background to make sure that it's not a problem on our end, and so on. Okay. Uh, Counselor Cunningham, you had additional question?
I don't know if it was a question, but just solidify, kind of from what I'm hearing from um the two presenters, that definitely, I think we need to have more comprehensive policy, just that's kinda what I'm hearing, because it sounds like there was a, it, like you say, it everything takes time, and it took you folks a little bit of time to um know which direction to go in, so I think that's a little bit on us to maybe have a look at that policy and make that a little bit more clear-cut.
Go ahead, Counselor Penner.
This might be more towards administration, um our other systems are all digitized, correct? You can tell it's twelve AM that the water was running at a certain residence, if they inquired on it and stuff like that, is that correct? The other systems are are digitized?
Uh, so through the chair, the other system that's similar to this is the equity system, just north of town here as well, there's no reservoirs on that system. This leak would likely have been found um on any of our other systems, noting the the drop in reservoir volume and uh the the flows going out of it. We have triggers uh for low-flow conditions, like through the middle of the night, as you're mentioning there, that do send alarms. Like I say, this one's a little more antiquated system, where we took it over and we're really just hand-delivering some of the the flows on this.
Well, and I bring this up because um we had a problem in one of our community centers a few years ago, they also got a massive um water bill, and so the documentation that was given to the executive on that, it showed when exactly when that water um started to flow and things like that. So should this kind of assist, um something we should be looking forward to in the coming budgets to, um I don't know what kind of computer program it is or whatever, that identifies um at these different, everyone's location hookups or whatever, but is it of is it of use, and I'm sure it is, because it picked up on our swallow one, notifying staff that there's a more more water going to a certain location and it's out of, like it's not like a spraying season where they're using more water or something like that, it's out of the norm. Should this kind of system be installed on all our systems, so that this does not happen? A- and is it able to ha- happen, because we're getting the water from the town here? I I'm not sure, just throwing it out there, you know, just to try and catch something like this, it's very unfortunate, and um I don't feel that it's necessarily our mistake, like fair enough getting back to them, there might be a bit of a delay that from staff that may be our problem, but um, you know, when something like this happens, it is up to the landowner to maintain their facilities.
Go ahead, Mr. Zier, did you wanna respond? Like, my thought is, is like, for sure, we inherited equity and Mount Vernon, and so the equipment that was in place when we inherited, we haven't necessarily upgraded at all. We did some upgrades to the um pumping station or something, uh lift um for Mount Vernon, but in terms of equipment and residents or customer location, we haven't done anything on those lines, other than routine maintenance, am I correct?
Through the chair, that's correct, yes.
So the systems that are in place in our own lines, where we have a more immediate ability to track water consumption, that would mean upgrades to both those systems in order for that to happen?
Through the chair, yes, correct, um like I mentioned earlier, if if council would like to see something like that during the the budgetary discussions going forward, um it's not gonna eliminate all of the the issues, this meter in particular is an older version, I mentioned it's a one-one-inch meter that um isn't able to be data logged, um as we had done with with the swallow leak there, um or even identified. That one was, like I say, was found because of the the drop in in reservoir throughout the night, um the level and rate there, so it's not gonna eliminate all the issues, uh it'll it'll definitely provide us with better data and and hopefully a better response to to the timing on this.
What you're saying is that, that would have to be a budget, and that would have to be a program change, and we'd probably end up changing out all that equipment.
For sure, I I think through the chair, what we can do is investigate some options for council to to consider at the budget uh budget discussions this year, if if so choose.
Go ahead, Counselor.
No, thank you for that. And also, is it um important that restrictors, and Counselor Woodstock brought it up about restrictors on the line, um is that something that should be mandatory on all hooked up to do, no matter which system you're on? Or can we, or do we, in the agreements with equity and Mount Vernon, um are we able to do that, restrict them to the four and three gallons? It's all just um information that maybe we, you have to bring back to us eventually?
Mr. Hogan.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and I thi- I think to to Counselor Penner's point, a lot of the discussion right now is information that we would have to bring back, um whether that was part of a budget uh budget process, uh whether that was, uh even assessing what those options might be, so, you know, the idea of, you know, replacing meters is one thing, if you're going in to to replace them, like the the willingness to do that by council and then the cost involved in that, is whether you're taking on that work for the entire system or not, if that works possible, if there's other solutions. As as Director Zier has said, I think there's, you know, what we've heard today is that the council is open to to exploring some of those options. The course of action, if that's the case, would be for us to go back and and see what is an option, and to put some of those back to to council with budget numbers and things like that, and those are, those are not items or answers that we're gonna be able to generate in the discussion today.
Even if it was restricted flow at four-point-two gallons, it's still twenty-five-thousand liters a day going out, so even at the four-point-two, or six, little over six thousand gallons a a day, but um the total water volume here is like almost one-point-five million liters that we're talking about. Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
And just to add to the conversation, as I noted before, looking back at the system, even with our antiquated um technology or how we've acquired this data, I don't know if if we would have caught this leak at that point, because I had mentioned, a few weeks after this, in the middle of uh sub-zero temperatures, we had a a daily count that was higher than one of the days on these leaks, so even with proper trending, it may not have caught this, uh it is somewhat, and and missed the delegation did point that out, is is landlord's responsibility to appoint as far as maintaining the system on their on their site.
Okay, so regardless of the problems within our system, um we did the reading on end of March, um we went, called, visited the resident by the eighth of April, um they had already resolved the issue on the sixth, um there was communication within our own system, and then communication back to them by the twenty-fifth, so really, looking at that, that's not that bad a timeline for internal discussion and then response back to the ratepayer in terms of saying, we might need to give some help here, or maybe you need to come to council, and then Carolyn had conversation with them, and they chose not a May date, but a June date to come and see us, so um just trying to keep the timeline fairly straight, I think that um for the staff and for the systems that we have, I don't think the timeline's all that bad, but if, that's that's a long time for that leak to be occurring, fifty-plus days, so. Yeah, it could have been twenty-five days at a much higher water volume.
Well, yeah, I mean, at eight gallons, it would have been twenty-five days, at two gallons, it would have been a hundred and ten days.
But it would have shown up in our billing quicker.
Yeah.
Okay, so really, the question is not about our system, it's about what do we wanna do specifically for the residents in question, and the, is there any relief that we wanna provide, or is there any action that as council, we want to uh do in order to provide some assistance for the residents who find themselves in this unfortunate place? That's really what their request was. Counselor Penner.
Um, I appreciate them coming in today and to discuss this, and um I'm all for working with our ratepayers, we do it with uh with businesses as well, so um for sure, for me, definitely, the penalties could be waived, and I would like to see them, um see us work with them over a timeframe that works for them as well, it's very unfortunate this happened, um so what's the rest of council's thoughts?
Counselor Forbes.
And I do feel for them, because this actually happened to me, one night, I thought I would water the trees at the back, and then at six-thirty, my husband decided to get up to go to work, and uh turns out, that billing cost me an extra hundred dollars, but cheaper than new trees, so um that responsibility fell fell on me, I wouldn't have never come into council, and people do whatever you need to do, but I believe too as well, that the penalty should be waived up until the point that this can all be paid back in full, because as an owner of a business, even though I may not be in all parts of it, I still have to go do a regular check on them, and that's, that falls to the owner of that land, and it's unfortunate, and I do feel for them, I really do, but.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion in terms of direction from council? Counselor Forbes, please.
And Counselor Cunningham's not wrong, if this is gonna become something that is the norm, I would like to see a policy being put into place for it.
Well, we do have policy, the question is, it's probably more about upgrade on the system than it is about upgrade on the policy, because most of our systems are more immediate in terms of um information coming back to us. These two systems that we've kind of inherited are not equipped in the same way, like the Mount Vernon system's been there, how long has been the water plant uh on the river? Boy, that's forty years? Or longer?
Well, I believe it was probably back in the late eighties.
Yeah, equity went in, yeah, it would have been mid to late eighties, yeah, and Mount Vernon's been, ever since the water plant's been on the river, so. But that equipment that's in place is now ours, and so you're correct, Mr. Zier, there needs to be conversation around what we might do to adjust our own system in terms of traceability and so on. So at this point, the only thing I'm hearing from council in terms of relief uh for the Bjorn's is that we would waive penalties until um the count is brought current. Counselor Forbes.
Just a question around, when we take over the facilities like Mount Vernon, is there a list of deficiencies that each of these systems that we're taking over were a result, when we signed the paperwork, to say it's now our responsibility?
Mr. Hogan.
Uh, through the chair, I think that's something we would need to go back and, and I'd have to go back and see even when we took over the Mount Vernon system, uh from it being.
Well, we know when we took over the Mount Vernon system, there was a deficiency that we had to address, and we did.
Yeah.
But that was at the pumping station, I believe. Um, there was some, Three Hills was not putting additional money into that, and so we upgraded at the Mount Vernon, I think the pumping station.
There was, I think there's two, we might be talking about two different, two different components here, is the, you know, if you're, and this, I guess, for my my own clarity, uh, Mr. Reeve, if you're talking about the twenty-nineteen or the twenty-twenty um process when we took that over, we took over the pump, the booster station.
Oh, the booster station.
Right, but the entirety of the system was already our, was was already ours.
We did, we did do upgrades to the booster system, a booster station at the time, right?
We, we've done some maintenance and upgrades there, we had the town do a number of upgrades before we took it over, so that, but that is just the booster station, if you're talking about when the entire system was inherited from the the co-op that built it, that we would have to go way back in the file to determine, because that would have been decades ago, right, to uh to go back and see what was done at the time, or or what wasn't.
That system would have been taken over probably close to twenty years ago.
So, Counselor Cunningham?
So, yeah, I think my comment about policy is just because I'm, you know, because this is something that we haven't, I haven't dealt with a lot in my time here, um like I'm just, if there was more of a policy that set out how we dealt with it, like, is it gonna be discretionary, if we have to have more people come in, like, I guess, what's the parameters of how we decide what's waived, what isn't? Um, and in listening to um the staff here today, I I think I'm hearing them say, maybe it was a little bit confusing on on their end too, as to the process, so, um, and again, it's no, no fault to the staff, um but I think there was that time period, like you said, it's it's not anybody's fault, but I I think there's that time period, but I would like to see a portion of that waived for the Bjorn's, just because it was a little bit on the county's end, I do understand um they could have come in May, from my understanding is, they didn't come due to work, um and I think, we're just trying to work to pay the bills, so it kind of, right, I mean, that's just the way it is, so um I, my opinion is, I would like to see us um reduce the overall bill quite a bit, I think um we deal with, everybody in in everyday world deals with people that don't wanna pay and make no effort to pay, and what I'm seeing from from the RFD that came forward and from listening to Mr. Bjorn, they have made an effort, and they've been very diligent in that, so I think that also has to be recognized as well, they're not running away from this, and and they've chosen to address it.
Okay, thank you for that, um I don't have a motion to any effect at this point in time by anybody, so if you care to put forward a motion- So if you care to put forward a motion, Counselor Cunningham, you're welcome to do that, or anyone else on council is also free to put forward a motion suggesting what we as council would direct administration to do in this particular situation. Counselor Christie, I saw your hand.
I appreciate that this is rare. I appreciate very much that they've come in, they've paid part of this bill already. It doesn't happen very often. Some could be our fault, some's their fault for the leak, but our notice procedure to get to them was maybe not quick enough. I'd be more than willing to, we pay half, they pay half. This is where I would be.
Are you putting that in a motion?
Well, as soon as Carolyn writes it, yep.
So Counselor Christie is putting forward a motion that council approve a reduction of half of the excess consumption? And are you waiving the penalties as well?
Yes, please.
So your motion would be reducing the amount on the bill to $2,893.04. Two thousand eight hundred ninety-three. And I'm splitting the seven cents by going up to four. Yes, you may ask a question, absolutely.
And it's around billing. So I see it says February 1st to March 31st, but the water bill that I receive comes January and then February. So why is this one off?
So there's two cycles, cycle one and cycle two, and then they're, they're different.
Okay.
So you're on a different cycle than them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for the explanation.
So in the, in the water policy that you referred to, 16...
16-20.
Yep. In there, it outlines the schedule of when the meters are read and which systems are read in which month.
Yes, yeah, there's a little chart that shows the different cyst, like the different ones and when they're read. So we read every month, but we read a different cycle. Yeah, so that's why there's, so you get billed every two months, but we still read monthly. It's just a different kind of water areas, like we call them cycles.
So we're doing readings every month, but not necessarily, it's every two months on a specific system, but we are doing readings every month, but they're different.
Yeah, yeah, different areas.
Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Chair, I think what I'd recommend on this motion is that we remove the dates, February, March, and February 1st and March 31st. If you're going to provide a reduction, just assign a dollar amount to it. And then it's clear, because if you're going February 1st to March 31st, the leak wasn't stopped until April 6th, there's another billing that you're not accounting for in there. Starts to get convoluted in there. So I think if you're looking at a reduction, just to a dollar amount would be, would be good. Just as a note, I did do some math on here. The request to indicate, or the request from the Bjorn's to go to the town rate, the town charges us $2.80 per cubic meter, we charge $4.05 per cubic meter, that would be, that would work out ultimately to a reduction of $1,785.83. I will note that, although that is a lower amount than what half that Counselor Christie is putting forward, so leave that with council. The only other clarity that I'll make is, a few months ago, council received a report around our water system. I know that the term profit was, was used in the, in the presentation. As we can, as we saw from that report, just the operational side of water is about $6.63 a cube. So there's no profit that we, as a county, are making on, on our water.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Counselor Westock, did you have a comment?
Actually, I had a question, but Mr. Hogan answered that question. Because I was under the assumption we paid about a buck eighty-three or something coming out of Three Hills. So for us to discount the water by 2025, I mean, we'd be on the back end, or we'd be on the wrong end even on, on the buying side, so. I, I don't know if we want to go to that buck eighty-three either, but, I mean, I'm just one person on council, but.
You were saying the purchase price from Three Hills is 280?
Oh, 283, sorry.
Yeah, 280.
So we're already...
Yeah, okay, sorry, I was thinking the other way here.
And you said it was 1,000 and... Sorry, Mr. Hogan.
Eleven hundred and some bucks.
So if we, if we've just passed on the straight rate from the town of Three Hills at the 280, for the overage, because I, and I don't, sorry, I don't have the numbers right there in front of me in terms of that, but I believe it was around 1,555 cubes was the total, and then minus the 66, which is the normal average, you're down into that, that 1428.66 in there. So if you applied the 280 rate to, sorry, I shouldn't say it, not, not applying the 280 rate, but basically, the difference between our rate and that would be a reduction of a dollar twenty-five per cubic meter. So the dollar twenty-five per cubic meter applied to the 1428 would be roughly $1,785.
Could you say that number again, the last number?
All right, so what Counselor Christie is suggesting in his motion is actually above what the request was. So if we approve a reduction of half of the excess consumption, that is actually about 20, almost $2,900. So that number that you have in there, Ms. Vanderkuul, can't be in there because it's not correct. So we should just say half of the excess consumption. So my understanding is the excess consumption amount was $5,786.07. And if we pass the motion made by Counselor Christie, we would be passing on a savings of $2,893.04 plus the penalties, which is $66.07.
Just to comment on that, I'd be way more concerned if this happened regularly, but when it's a one-off over a long period of time, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Counselor Penner.
So I do want to work with them at some point, but we have to remember that the money here, and we talk about it lots, the money is our rate, belongs to our ratepayers. So we, and this is not our asset that malfunctioned here, so we, I don't want to set a precedent here, because it is our ratepayer dollar that we are talking about here. We do not make a profit on water, period. It is actually a cost of you get right down to the nuts and bolts of things. So that, that does concern me too, because we, we talk regularly about this is ratepayer dollars.
Counselor Cunningham.
Yeah, and I don't want to set a precedent either, but I think it just comes back to kind of, again, we're doing discretionary. So I think if we had something very clear-cut as to how we deal with situations like this in policy, it would make it a little bit easier going forward if it happens to happen again.
Deputy Reeve McGee.
I keep wrestling with the very same things Counselor Penner was saying. It's our, our ratepayer dollar. And you know what? I really feel for them, but we also have to recognize that their error cost us more ratepayer dollars. And so, just to go around another circle, because of those two factors, I wouldn't, I won't be voting in favor of the motion as it was originally made.
So if I could weigh in there, Ms. Vanderkuul? Okay, Counselor Christie, you are the mover of this motion, and it now reads that council approve a water invoice reduction of $2,893.04 for the Bjorn's and waive the penalties associated on the outstanding amount. Are you okay with that motion?
That's what I would do.
Okay, that's your motion? All right. Any further discussion to the motion? I'm not seeing any. Are we prepared for the question? Okay, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. All right, so Ms. Nyman and Ms. Von Merbach, thank you for your time and for bringing the information to us today. We appreciate your assistance in making this decision. Thank you. Counselor Phobes.
I'd also like to see this policy come before council so we can have a thorough discussion about it, since it hasn't been addressed since 2019.
All right. I think administration has heard that direction from us, so. Are you making a motion to that effect?
I certainly am.
Okay, then that makes it most clear. That's how we... So council direct administration to bring policy 16-20 to council for review and updating? Okay, just hang on for a minute, Jerry. The council direct administration to bring back policy 16-20, which is utility billing for review and updating. It's actually entitled utility billing.
Then I no longer have a question.
And just take, Ms. Vanderkuul, if you could just take out the back behind billing. Thank you. Okay, so Counselor Phobes' motion reads that council direct administration to bring back policy, okay, bring policy 16-20, utility billing for review and update. Everyone's clear on the motion? Counselor Penner, question?
I'm clear on this one. I thought some time ago, and correct me if I'm wrong, that within a four-year term, all policies would be reviewed of some kind, like at least being worked on by staff in the background. Is this still something that your staff is working, or administration is working on? Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Hogan.
Through the, through the chair, being on that cycle, yes. So that is still the goal.
So that's the stated goal, doesn't necessarily...
Doesn't always happen.
Yeah, okay. When we put a bunch of other things on the table? Okay, so we have a motion to direct administration to bring policy 16-20, utility billing to a future council meeting for review and update. Counselor Phobes, motion? Any further discussion? If not, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. And again, thank you, Ms. Nyman, Ms. Von Merbach. Appreciate your time here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need a break?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take five minutes. Let's take seven minutes. We'll be back here at 12:50.
Can't get four women in and out in five minutes.
That's... That's... Okay, it is twelve fifty, and I'm going to call our meeting back to order. Okay, Counselor Christie, you are the mover of this motion, and it now reads that council approve a water invoice reduction of two thousand eight hundred ninety-three dollars and four cents for the Bjorn's and waive the penalties associated on the outstanding amount. Are you okay with that motion?
That's what I would do.
Okay, that's your motion, all right. Any further discussion to the motion? I'm not seeing any. Are we prepared for the question? Okay, I'm going to ask the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is carried. All right, so Ms. Vanderkuul, if you could just take out the back behind billing. Thank you. Okay, so Counselor Phobes' motion reads that council direct administration to bring back policy sixteen dash twenty, which is utility billing for review and updating. It's actually entitled utility billing.
Then I no longer have a question.
And just take, Ms. Vanderkuul, if you could just take out the back behind billing. Thank you. Okay, so Counselor Phobes' motion reads that council direct administration to bring back policy sixteen dash twenty, utility billing for review and update. Everyone's clear on the motion? Counselor Penner, question?
I'm clear on this one. I thought some time ago, and correct me if I'm wrong, that within a four-year term, all policies would be reviewed of some kind, like at least being worked on by staff in the background. Is this still something that your staff is working, or administration is working on, Mr. Hogan?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, being on that cycle, yes. So that is still the goal.
So that's the stated goal, doesn't necessarily...
Doesn't always happen.
Will we put a bunch of other things on the table? Okay, so we have a motion to direct administration to bring policy sixteen dash twenty, utility billing to a future council meeting for review and update. Counselor Phobes, motion? Any further discussion? If not, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. And again, thank you, Ms. Nyman, Ms. Van Der Bock. Appreciate your time here today. Thank you. Okay. Do we need a break?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take five minutes. Let's take seven minutes. We'll be back here at twelve fifty.
Can't get four women in and out in just five minutes.
That's... The other part of that chair meeting is, it was a pretty in-depth discussion on our resolution session in our annual meeting.
There, the board has got some pushback from that, so they're looking hard at maybe a third-party chair for that part of the meeting to make, to take the, what do you call it? The parliamentary procedure would be more accurate and more firm. So that would help that discussion. So that was the highlights of those two meetings, so.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, not seeing any. So would somebody care then to make a motion to accept council committee reports? Counselor Christie?
So moved.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to accept the council committee reports for information as presented. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The next item on our agenda is ten-point, item ten, council follow-up action list. Are there any questions for administration regarding the council follow-up action list? And are we going to see any decision on our request for financial prior to that time?
Through Mr. Chair, the process is in abeyance until the fall. I believe it's a date in September. I would have to look up the exact one. The, and in terms of a decision on our request, we were worded some. I would just have to go back in the file to look at what that amount was, just to confirm.
All right, so we're not having to wait. They are making a decision as rewarding costs up to this point. Okay, thank you. Deputy McGeek?
It probably belonged in the reports, maybe, but I'm not sure. But we had a rate payer meetings, they're indicated as completed. I was wondering if we wanted a follow-up discussion about...
What happened?
Yeah, I don't know, just a little debriefing of what our staff might have heard and appreciated and wanted to learn from, and anything else that counselors might have seen.
So are you requesting a more formal report on that? Or are you looking just for a casual conversation at this point?
I think casual conversation now is enough. And then we'll have probably a little bit more formal when we relook at it next year. But I'm open to ideas.
Okay. Counselor Phobes?
I guess I too would also like to know how many people showed up in Huxley versus Horseshoe Canyon, what the questions were that administration would have gotten versus what council got from the public. It's always good to hear what they have to say.
Okay, so perhaps to allow administration an opportunity to prepare that type of information, maybe what we should do is make a motion to request a report on the two rate payer events.
So moved.
That a girl?
I think in fairness to administration, it allows them to provide us with a more complete amount of information. And I would also like to see if we're going to get a report like that, is the difference in costing for an event in Huxley as compared to the mobile event at Horseshoe Canyon? We knew it was going to cost more, but I just...
Yes, I agree. For transparency, it's important, yeah.
We need to speed this up, so Counselor Phobes survives the meeting. Okay, so motion is that council direct administration to bring forward a report and costing for the two rate payer events held in Huxley and Horseshoe Canyon. Okay with that, Deputy McGeek?
Yep.
Our intent is pretty clear, I think. Mr. Hogan, did you have a comment that you wanted to make, or?
I noted this one on a previous question.
Okay, so let's just vote on this motion. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. And Mr. Hogan, I defer to you again.
The question around Lone Butte was asked previously, so thus far, we've been awarded just over twenty thousand dollars. So that's approximately, that's a fifty percent of...
About half of our...
About half of what we've put in so far.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, any other...
No, sorry.
Any other questions related to council follow-up action list? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So, somebody care to make a motion to receive as presented and for information? Thank you, Counselor Phobes. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the question. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. I thought maybe for a minute you were opposed. All right. So there is no other business on our agenda for today. So I will make the motion to say we are adjourned at one oh one A PM. Not AM. That'd be a long meeting.
That'd be a long day.